Call the meeting to order beginning with the termination of the corn, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Chair, we have all members present.
All right, next will rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here this evening, we have a pretty full agenda. We'll start with the approval of the agenda, I want to make a couple of suggestions for amendments to the agenda as you see it. So I'm gonna make those, and then if the board sees fit, they can make a motion to approve that. So, under item 10, items A and B, I think should be flip-flopped. There's a community comment, which is scheduled to come after the potential, the action item on the special ed cooperative. And I think the intent was to have a comment on that item, so it probably makes more sense to have that ahead of time. So, we would flip items 10B and 10A if that's agreeable with the board. Item 8, B17. This is the athletic cooperative sponsorship. In the last week, Todd and I were approached by Ed Friesen, I have that name right, who is the activities director at Bethlehem Academy. And he was hoping to have a discussion at some level between BA and the district on that item. And it seemed to us appropriate to have that discussion before the board takes action on that. So it was our suggestion that we remove that from this agenda item, and then we would take it up in July. It seemed appropriate, if the board agrees to that, we'll do that then, so we can have that conversation before taking action on that. And then Nicole also just handed out, there was just a very recent hire, this was a position that was approved at our previous board meetings. So this is an item that would normally show up in our consent agenda, the hiring of the service learning coordinator. And so if the board approves, we will add the hiring of the service learning coordinator to the consent agenda, so it won't be something we discuss. But that would have to be, before we approve the agenda, I want to make sure that people are comfortable with that being in that part of the agenda or not. So, with I think those small changes, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as discussed.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion during those changes? Comfort level with those? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. That brings us to some recognitions and awards. I don't know if any of these folks are here receiving, maybe aware of. I don't know if you have the names with you, Todd, for some of these things, do you?
I have the last names. It was two brothers, Schultz brothers and Wetzel sisters.
So we had some FFA state champs within the district. And so we wanted to recognize them this evening. I'm sorry that we didn't get their names on the agenda, so I don't have them better than some Wetzels and some Schultz's.
Two Wetzels, two Schultz's.
Two Wetzels and two Schultz's. So we congratulate them on their success. We want to also recognize this evening, Andy Johnson, for her work. We were without our esteemed Colleen Mursthorff for a few months. And Andy willingly and awfully stepped into that role, coming off of maternity leave and while trying to keep up her normal role as well. And so we wanted to thank her this evening for that.
Well, thank you, it was a great experience.
We appreciate your commitment so much, and we would not have been able to get through that budgeting process without your work. So thank you very much for stepping up when it was needed, Andy. The entire district appreciates it. We also have a transportation specialist award winner with, I think that would be MSBAO, I'm not gonna guess what that is, but it's a Minnesota organization of transportation specialists. And one of our transportation specialists, Steve Forsberg, won that award. And we have had quite a few of those over the years, I guess, in my time here, that we've had transportation people from Faribault winning that award. And so we appreciate the hard work that Faribault Transportation does for the district, and particularly for all those bus drivers who take their kids, take our kids into their care every day. It's great, we appreciate it, the professional job that they do. Okay, and that brings us then to community comment. This is a time for any member of the community whom may have concerns or thoughts that they would like to share with the board, to come forward and do so at this time. There is a three-minute limit per speaker and a 15-minute limit per topic. Are there any members of the community who would like to come forward at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will move along in the agenda. And that brings us to the consent agenda. Consent items are not debatable by the board. We entertain a motion and approval in one action for these items. However, any item can be removed by any single board member for discussion, if there's a desire to do so. Is there, are there any requests this evening for removing items from the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to request the following retirements be removed for specific recognition. Diane Ides, 33 years. Jean Morris, 38 years. Janice Steinbauer, 22, and Patricia Crinkie, 15 years. So I'd like to address each of those.
All right, so we'll remove those retirements from the consent agenda, and I will look to your guidance again when we get there, as we have in the past months, for carrying us through those. For getting us through those as we discuss those after approving the consent agenda. Are there any other items for removal from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, with the removal of the items noted. Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Tom?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Yvette?
Aye.
Myself, aye, Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Mr. Chair passes 7-0.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. And so, Mr. Robichaud, please, if you would step us through those items we have removed, and we'll take those one at a time.
Thank you. First of all, Diane Ides has submitted her notice of retirement from Faribault Public Schools. And I had the privilege of hiring Diane a few years ago. And she's been a dedicated individual in this, in the school district, working diligently with the deaf and hard of hearing students from the academies. And she's impacted a number of students, so we wish her the very best in her retirement, and hope that she'll keep in contact with the school district, because we're always looking for substitutes, so. Anyway, with that, I will move acceptance of her retirement.
All right, we have a motion to accept the retirement of Diane Ides, I'm saying that right now. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Mr. Robichaud?
The next person is a retirement of Patricia Crinkie, who was a hair professional in our school district, a reading teacher, I'm sorry, for 15 years. And again, to think of the number of students' lives that she has touched over those 15 years, so we wish her the very best, and again, stay in contact, always looking for good substitutes as well. So I will move approval of her request for retirement.
All right, we have a motion to approve the retirement of Patricia Crinkie, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the retirement of Patricia Crinkie, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Robichaud?
The next individual, Jean Morris, who has been in the district for 38 years. And I have had the privilege and the honor of working with that person while I was director of special education, and she was in fact, the special ed person in the district. And she made an awful lot of us look pretty doggone good when it came to understanding special education and the skills and the talents that she brought to that office were above anybody else. Probably her greatest claim to fame is that she was probably one of the few people who could read my handwriting, and did it fairly quickly. But it was my honor to work with Jean Morris for close to 13 years while I was a number of administrative duties. She also was instrumental in working with the transition of three different directors, four different directors of special education, all of which those transitions would not have happened successfully without Jean's involvement and commitment to this district. She has given 38 years of her career to this district. She is somebody, again, who is a tremendous representative of the quality of individuals who work in this district. I personally wish Jean the very, very best. And again, I was very honored to have the opportunity to work with Jean for a number of years when I first came to this district. However successful special ed was, it was because of Jean and not anybody else, so we wish her the very, very best. So with that, I will recommend approval of Jean's request for retirement.
All right, we have a motion to approve the retirement of Jean Morris, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a, we'll give it to you. I saw that look on Nicole's face, she didn't know where to go.
I don't want to hog the second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second to approve the retirement of Jean Morris, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you all.
The last person is Janice Steinbauer, who has been working in the schools for 22 years, and working with EBD students at the middle school. And, you know, many people after one year of working with very significantly involved students, decide that it's time to go somewhere else, but she stayed with the students and the staff for 22 years. And has to be commended for that kind of dedication, again, to the students that attend our Faribault Public Schools. With that, I will move approval of her request for retirement.
We have a motion to approve the retirement of Janice Steinbauer, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the retirement of Janice Steinbauer, any further discussion?
I'd like to add to what Jerry said, it was a privilege to work with Jen for a number of years, and she's been an asset to our district.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and again, Jerry, thank you for bringing those out, it's the least that we can do as a board to recognize these folks in their retirement. Mr. Wolf?
Can I just ask a question real quick? I think this is our third board meeting where we've had an approved retirement. And I don't think, I don't know if there's any teachers on this one or not, but just in terms of process, in terms of times and whatnot, obviously there's contracts involved and whatnot. But by having three different, we've had three different board meetings, so three different months where we've approved contracts. Is that all done based on contracts with different union groups? Or is it, are we at all? It's just timing, but I mean, are we at all delayed in hiring quality, the best quality candidates, replace them by, you know, having staggered retirements? Just a procedural question.
You know, it's a good question. Obviously, the earlier that we get the retirements, the better. But in our situations, I think we're in pretty good shape with the ones that we have right now, so if it starts to get later, August and September, then we hit the panic button, but we're still in pretty good shape.
Nicole, are there any deadlines for when somebody can turn in their resignation from a contract standpoint?
There's not.
There's not?
We try to push at the beginning by April 1st, if at all possible, but it's really sometimes, especially if you work for so long, that whole separation can be very, very difficult.
Thank you. Okay, so we are now at the curriculum committee. Do we have a curriculum report from Colleen?
We did actually hold the meeting, however, there were a variety of reasons why people could not attend the meeting, so we ended up with just basically three, three people at the meeting, so we did decide to cancel it. And I just wanted to also let you know that we will cancel in the month of July, because that is our same expectation, many of our staff are gone, and numerous people are not here in the month of July. But we will resume on August, I believe it's August 11th. And so, did make the attempt, but people were not, not available at this time. A lot of our staff was at Avid, and so they were away.
Did you say August 11th?
I believe it's August 11th.
And that leads us to item 6B, a technology update, there is no report this evening. Policy, item 7 on the agenda. Was there, there was a policy meeting this month, would the policy committee like to make a report on that meeting?
Jerry, you wanna fill in or let me go?
Go ahead, unless Andrew wants to put the fill-in in the caps, Andy. He wants, he misses.
Okay.
Andrea?
Yep.
Thanks. Or, I think Amory was there too, for the wellness piece. But the policies that you see in front of you have been reviewed by the, by the policy committee, and also those subcommittees that we hope to get input from in order to create those policies, and these are in their first readings up through number two, number three is in the second reading, but other than the wellness policy, we should have had time to read hopefully, and go through, the other ones are, the other two are pretty standard policies.
All right, thank you, Todd.
Mr. Chair, I just have one comment, and maybe Cheryl can respond to this, but you know, we have, in statute, we have caseload limits for certain stu, certain special education teachers. And so, maybe you can answer that, because it's not something that you were part of the discussion with. Why is now MSBA bringing forth a policy where it's already written in statute, as to what kind of caseloads we can have for specialized students?
Well, I'll try to answer that, well, there's a new.
That's an unfair question.
Right, right, it was, it was brought forward, as you know, by, by the state, you know, the changes in the rule that that caseload policy was updated, the state this year, and it was, there was a group that looked at, task force that looked at it, and brought forward what they felt was appropriate, and then really feel that it's something that at the school district level, that those decisions need to be made. And I think it's left broad enough to allow that to happen. There have been, have always been, some limits to certain groups that are served, which used to be over 50% of the time, and now it's over 60% of the time, in a setting, in a special education setting, there are those limits that are set, and those have always been set that, that way for many, many years. Is that what you're asking? I don't know if I answered that correctly.
Yeah, basically, what in the policy is different, and I guess we can take a look at that later as we go through it, Cheryl, I'm sorry, I don't mean to ask you that.
No, that's right.
What's in, what in the policy is different than what's in statute? And so, which one governs our caseload for students that are, you know, special needs, that are students with disabilities? Is it the policy or is it the statute? And I think that's, that can potentially cause some conflicts, so we'll have to take a look at that a little closer.
Right. I think, I think that's the answer, is that we have to look at it, and I think it allows each district to look at it individually, to look at how it best fits your district and the services for your students, that are in that mild to moderate disability range.
I just think the policy is redundant to what's in statute. And so I see no reason for us to have the policy, it's overreaching in my opinion.
I, I see, okay.
We would probably agree with you a little bit on that, too.
Overreaching? I don't know, when I use it, I get criticized for it. You're fine.
Thank you, Cheryl.
One thing, wouldn't statute, you know, govern, because I know with billing code, the cities can't do their own thing with codes, it's, go back to the state statute, you can't supersede state statute.
Yes, sometimes what MSBA will do is they'll make a policy mandatory, quote unquote, that parallels the state statute, which I'm assuming that this does. They just want to put it in our handbook, that's probably about it.
If there's any question on who to blame, that's what.
That's right.
It would be that school district that is blamed.
Well, we'll go ahead and move right into the policies for first reading then, and see if there's any more questions about that.
Thank you.
For those who may not be familiar with the way policies are addressed by the board, policies are brought to the board twice before they can be enacted. So they come before the board as a first reading, which is a time for the board to first look at it in public, and to ask questions about those policies, but it is, we never act on those policies during a first reading. Policies then come back to the board for a second meeting at the following month's meeting usually, and it is at that time of the second meeting that action can be taken. So that's the naming of the first reading and second reading that we'll be discussing. So for this evening, we have three policies in front of us for first reading, meaning we will not be acting on them, they're for informational purposes this, at this meeting, and the next meeting we would likely take action on them. Those policies are policy 533, wellness, policy 427, workload limits for certain special education teachers, and policy 509, enrollment for non-resident students. So we can go ahead and discuss any of those, and if we would like to pick up more questions about 427, that's what we were just talking about, we can continue those. I guess towards your, I guess I'm just noticing a slight typo right now, it says policy 427 in the, in the agenda, but the actual policy starts by saying policy number 433. I don't know which one is which, and I guess I don't care, I just probably should have one or the other.
I'll circle.
So we'll decide on one of those for the second reading. But I guess as I was looking at the policy in light of your questions, I'm not seeing any specific workloads limits being named in this policy. It more seems to be a policy about establishing that there are workload limits, and some definitions of things related to those workload limits. I don't know whether or not that makes it redundant or not, but that was just something I noticed, that I don't see anything in here that says a, an instructor can have a certain number of students, or service a certain number of hours, students during a certain number of hours. Are there any other questions on any of these three policies before us this evening, first reading?
Jason, can I just comment on policy 533? I just kind of smirk under item number two, general statement of policy. Item number two B, I guess. Todd, you're probably gonna know what I'm smirking about here. "The school environment should promote and protect students' health, well-being, and ability to learn by encouraging caring relationships, and positive routines and practices through, for example, healthy eating and physical activity." I'm just curious if they have FIAID twice a week, how much physical activity they are getting, but I'll just leave it at that, and we'll move on.
Just, just to insert a little comment in there, because I can't go without making some comment, because I do support that, you know that. We are looking at doing some healthy activities within the classroom, too, that are not necessarily in the FIAID department, so, but your comment is well taken.
You guys are the experts, I'm just saying.
Any other questions or comments on any of these three policies? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next agenda item. That is item 8, 3, we have a one policy in front of us this evening for approval, for second reading approval. That is policy 506, student discipline, so we've had, this is our second opportunity to look at this policy. Are there any questions on this policy before we take action? I'll entertain a motion to approve policy 506, student discipline?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Mr. Casper.
I yield to my younger patriots.
Will let Nicole aside.
Take the guy with hair.
Any further discussion on this, on this policy, any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of adopting policy 506, student discipline, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And this brings us to two rescissions that we need to do, these are all policy, policies, one of which is the policy which we just replaced, policy 506, student discipline, the other which is policy 810, acceptance of gifts. It seems like we did just adopt the policy, but I guess we didn't do the rescission at that time?
Correct.
I have a memory of us just adopting that?
Yep.
Okay, so we have these two policies, and we're simply rescinding them because we have recently approved their replacements. So I will entertain a motion to rescind policy 810, acceptance of gifts, that was adopted September 21st, 2009, and policy 506, student discipline, that was adopted October 20th, 2008.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to rescind the policies as named, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And motion carries, thank you. That brings us to finance. We'll begin with item 8A, you have the minutes from the June 15 meeting of the finance committee, is there anything the finance committee would like to add before we move along into the items that were recommended to the, to the fina, or to the board for approval? This is man and treasure.
This is my introduction, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just, is there anything you'd like to say before, or should we just simply move into the items?
I guess I would just say the contracts were all approved by the finance committee that we're about to go through, and people had questions individually, but I think in general, people supported all the contracts that were presented tonight. The discussion around the cooperative, you do have the sheet in your packet which looks at what was proposed by the finance committee, which was raising the percentage this year to 50, then 75, then 100 percent. So that's the issue that we're tabling tonight, or hoping that staff at the two schools can meet to discuss the cooperative rate. The finance committee did vote to raise that rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. All right, we will go ahead then and move into the items recommended to the board for approval. Item 8B, starting with, let me get those up in front of me, starting with the audit engagement letter, so this is something we do every year, to approve the auditors coming in and looking at our books, and making sure that we are using appropriate techniques for caring for the finances of the district, and this is the agreement for doing so.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve, any further discussion on the item?
Mr. Chair, is there a reason why we don't do this more than one year at a time? Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you mean approve a two-year contract or a three-year contract? No reason, I guess, you know, the max you could do would be a two-year with some renewals, but typically, we've not done that, I guess.
Would it be beneficial if we did, Colleen?
I don't see a benefit to doing it or not doing it. You know, it's a pretty competitive environment, there are so a lot of firms out there that do it, and we don't have a lot of money, so they generally, they don't make a lot of money off us, that's for sure.
That's true, okay.
Colleen, how long have we been with Larsonell?
Oh, gosh, 20, 30 years, a very long time, yeah. And they're one of the best firms in the state.
Colleen, another question about timing, I think probably you've asked this every year, I know for a while, we were doing audits later than we would have preferred, but their schedule gets busy, and so that's what we were relegated to, and we were trying to move that forward. What's the, what's the timing of this?
Yes.
Does it change at all, or is it where we want it yet?
Our superstar Andy is gonna start on audit tomorrow.
Pretty much.
Yep, so yes, we have early dates this year, it was either very early or much later in October, and we knew- It was either very early or much later in October and we knew you didn't want to wait that long. So she'll be starting on the preliminary stuff and they will be here in August, for a week in August. So yes, we should have good data by September, October.
And we wouldn't anticipate moving in here earlier than that, I'm sure in the future.
Pretty difficult to go in here.
That's as early as we're going to go.
It's really.
And I know we, in past years, it's been much later than we wanted to be as a district.
Yes, and hopefully now we're on, back on that good schedule, because I think Fairboe had a history prior to all of the changes happening in the business office, had a history of having audits done in August. And that's really as early as you can, because right now, we just got our student, first good data on student count numbers. So it just, it takes a while and you've got bills that are still coming in for last year, so it's pretty difficult to do it much earlier than that.
That's great that we're where we want to be in time, though. Thank you for that. Any other questions on the site? Can someone remind me? My memory says we have a motion and a second, correct? So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to the Fernbrook contract. Mr. Superintendent, would you like to say a little bit about that?
Sure, I just, I'll just read from the, the annotation here. Considering the approval of a contract with Fernbrook Family Services to provide Fairboe Elementary and Middle School students access to mental health therapy during the school day, FFS has a five-year grant from Department of Human Services to increase access to mental health therapy for school-aged children and families. The district will provide space for the therapists to work with students individually or in small groups. Students may be referred for these services after parent permission is obtained. Fernbrook accesses the grant funding for startup costs, scholarships, et cetera. In addition, Fernbrook builds medical assistance and insurance plans to fund the program. This service is at no additional cost to the district. And it gives us basically mental health services for middle school and high school.
Now, Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, this was a service that had been, we had been getting that provided by Rice County?
Actually, this is a new service. Yep, that one's a little bit different. This is a, yep, this is a new service that would be helping our mental health with just middle school and high school.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that part. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, this brings us to Discovery School Purchase of Services Agreement, School Psychologist. I'm assuming that this is, these are services we're providing to Discovery with our school psychologists and they're reimbursing us for those services.
Exactly.
Fair second. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. A motion carries. Up next, we have Nurse Train Purchase of Services Agreement for some occupational therapy, physical therapy, autism services and ECSE services, ECSE consultation services. I'm assuming same thing, that we're providing these services and they're reimbursing us for those. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Nurse Train Purchases, Purchase of Services Agreement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Up next, we have a Northfield Purchase of Services Agreement. What does AT stand for?
Assistive Technology.
Assistive Technology and some occupational therapy services. I'll entertain a motion to approve. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And just to clarify, these are services we are providing to them that they are reimbursing for us, just to clarify, all right? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to the contract for Teresa Rome, who provides us MA billing services. She works with this district to help us with our MA billing services and we have seen a dramatic increase in, in the resources coming to the district since we have been hiring her for those services. Is there, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Up next, we have the 2015-2016 Food Service Contract with Sedexo. We do do this annually. Colleen, I'm sure I've asked this before, I wanted to ask you again this evening. Is this something we ever go out for bid on? It feels like I've asked this before.
Yes, we do. We're required to go out for bid every three years on this. So last year, we went out for bid and the way this works is that you have then a one-year contract with two one-year renewals. So every year, then, we renew the contract at, at new rates for the next school year.
So it's something we bid, we have to bid every three years.
Yes.
We're not signing three-year contracts, though.
No.
In theory, we could go out and bid any year that we wanted to.
Right.
All right, just so I understood that. And it feels like, and, and, again, I'm not sure if I'm right about this. It feels like I've asked this before, that often when you're bidding for these services, it can be difficult when you have one contract to get competitive bids from other contractors?
It depends. We typically send it out to the list of approved vendors from the Department of Education. What a lot of vendors will do is call me and say, are you dissatisfied with their service? Are you really looking for somebody new? And I always encourage them to bid, but I am honest with them to say, you know, we, yes, we have been satisfied with what they've done. They've, they've been very, I tell them all the things that they worked good with. And so, because it takes a lot to put together a bid and it's, you know, fairly time-consuming and expensive for companies to do that, so a lot of times, it's like the bus bids. You know, you're not gonna invest in a whole new fleet of buses if you're not looking, if you know the district's not looking for a new service provider. So sometimes I'll get bids and sometimes I won't. Last year, I think I had two that inquired and one that did submit a bid. And then pulled out after the walkthrough. When they saw, when they actually saw what we were doing and what we were looking for, then they said, you know, we probably, we just don't think we can handle it. So.
Any other questions on the site?
So are you saying like Sedexo goes above and beyond with what they're offering us? If people are pulling out in a walkthrough, can you explain why would they pull?
They might see the type of food service that we're offering at the high school or the elementary schools or the middle school and maybe their company is not set up to do that or they don't think they can find a food service director or that's just not something that they have expertise in. Yeah. Yeah, because I, we always offer anybody who wants to bid an opportunity to walk through and see the sites. And then we talk about all the programs we're doing and we're doing a lot of programs with our population. Yeah, actually, we're doing almost, I think at this point now, with the addition of the dinner program, we're doing everything we can.
And then there's talk about.
Anything else we can do to feed kids?
Isn't there talk about doing like breakfast carts at the high school?
Yes.
Yeah, so that'd be another.
Yes. Yep. Tim's got a couple of great ideas for breakfast at the high school next year. Doing something out by the pack and then maybe even having some locations within where kids are between first and second hour. And offering, because kids, you know, don't like to eat at seven o'clock in the morning, so. A lot of adults don't either, so.
Right. Great, thanks, Colleen.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
We do have an additional Fernbrook contract that we have to go back to review regarding Crec. So there's a separate Fernbrook. It would be B2.
Wait, didn't we approve that one?
We approved the mental health services in the middle school, but there is a Crec contract that we need to.
There are two contracts under item B2? I see, thank you. There, I didn't recognize those as actually, I thought they were two attachments for the same thing. You're saying these are two different agreements. Okay. And we talked about the mental health services, so we would have approved that. Thank you very much. Let us go back to that right now. Thank you, Evette. So let's, my apologies for not seeing that, looking at that carefully enough. We are going back to item B2 for the Fern, and there are two Fernbrook contracts. The first of which we were discussing was to the mental health services that were being provided. The second of which is a Fernbrook, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Todd, to explain to me what the difference is in the second one.
Yep. The first one, as Evette said, was to deal with the mental health services and that's at no cost to the district, so that's for the high school and the middle school. The second contract is the contract with our current Cannon Education, our, our Crec building, Cannon River Education Center. And that, because of the different changes in how the funding works with Crec and our special education agreement and the county, the county decided that they were no longer going to provide the services for us. And so then we went out and we sought for either doing it ourselves or hiring a private firm to offer these mental health services for us. And so as a result, Cheryl has negotiated a, a contract with Fernbrook for our current Crec students. And the net amount for that, after all revenues and expenditures, is about $40,000. That would be split 50/50 basically with Northfield. So it would be a cost to the district of about $20,000. So Cheryl, I'm sure can fill in the blanks for that if you have questions, but that's the, the gist of the, of the.
Thank you. Now, I was gonna understand my question to you, but I was not quite as confused as I thought. More confused in other ways. Thank you for, for helping me clear that up.
This was presented to the Finance Committee and I think it was a higher dollar amount than it was originally presented to the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee approved going forward with the contract.
In, Todd, in Cheryl, maybe you can answer this, but part of this was, did the state change some funding or formula type of thing?
That is correct. The law changed so that we were unable to do it the current, with the current system that we have right now. The county or us, either one of us couldn't do it with the same relationship, so both of us had to make some changes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve and a second and then discuss, say, motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Are there, is there any further discussion, any further questions?
And this, just to clarify, is for one year until you make a decision.
Oh, I'll move forward, I think. All right, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And again, my apologies for confusing that, that item 8B2. So let me make sure I'm back on contract. We are now on item 8B8, the Minnesota State Academies. Let me get myself to there. So we're looking to approve the, item 8B8, Minnesota State Academies Orientation and Mobility Services. Superintendent Sescor, do you want to say a little bit about that?
Yeah, and I, you know what, I'm gonna defer to, to Cheryl for this one too. And even though I work with the academies, I think coming from Cheryl makes a little bit more sense.
Each year, we contract with the State Academies for our orientation and mobility services for students that are visually impaired. So this is the contract that we have for them to provide that services to our students in our school district.
Any questions for Cheryl? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the Minnesota State Academies Orientation and Mobility Services. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to workers' compensation and property and liability insurance renewals. Superintendent Sescor, do you want to say a little bit about that?
Yeah, and I'll probably defer this one to Colleen, insurance. We, every year, we go out and we look for our workers' comp and property and liability insurances to see what the best offer is there. And I don't know, Colleen, do you want to comment to see what sort of results we end up with? Obviously, it's attached to your document, but.
The property and liability renewal came in very good. I think it was only about $6,000 over our current premium, $8,000 over our quota premium from last year or a year ago. The work comp premium, however, is a different story. That was quite a bit higher for two reasons. Our Experience MOD, which is the number that the state calculates to determine our rates, to help companies determine our rates for the next year, went up significantly. So what that's saying is that we are spending more on work comp claims than the company was getting in premium dollars. So it works a lot like health insurance or any other type of insurance, so they fund you at a certain level. It's not that our number of claims have gone up, but we have had one or two very significant claims that have been large dollar amounts. So that's just unfortunate. There is nothing we could have done to prevent that. It was just the way it turned out to be when those folks needed to have, be taken care of medically. So that's one of the reasons that our increase is up. The second reason is that with the growth of our programs, we, we're adding staff. And so as your wages go up, your work comp premium is based on wages, so then that also has affected our increase in premium.
Any questions for Colleen on that? I will entertain a motion to approve the workers' compensation and property and liability insurance renewals.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to Adult Basic Ed Secretary Increase Request. Superintendent Sescor.
Yeah, Adult Basic Education is just requesting an increase of an OP-1 position from a .62 to a .75. So no increase, and I understand the Finance Committee approved that.
It comes directly out of their fund. They have sent you to, they've got an increase in the services they're providing. They need the increase time to sell.
All right, thank you.
Chair, question with that increase, does that impact any personnel issues bidding or anything of that nature?
We currently have an opening in that position.
Okay.
So it will, it won't affect anyone in the current position.
All right, any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the Adult Basic Ed Secretary Increase Request. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to the Cannon River Educational Cooperative Professional Increase Request. Superintendent Sescor.
Yeah, again, the additions of these non-licensed staff are required to provide student, or services for new students that are there. And they're, they're placed by their IEP teams and they're part of that SUN program in our special education program.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the CREC Prepare Professional Increase Request. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, my understanding, because this was presented to the Finance that we're basically, under the SUN program, we're doubling the staff. And there was questions brought up, why are we doubling the staff? Right now, there's four staff doing it and now we eight and.
I'll let Ms. Hall answer this, because it's, this can be a little bit sensitive.
Our Students with Unique Needs Program usually has a one-to-one adult-to-student ratio. The new students were placed late this spring and we did not bring those forward for an increase at this, at this time, earlier this spring. And so we are preparing for the next school year and for the appropriate ratio of adults to students in that program. And it's a shared cost between Northfield and Fairboe. It's the, the one-to-one is, is the responsibility of the resident district to provide for that cost. And some of those students are Northfield students.
I don't believe I have a motion, a second. Uh, I don't believe I have a motion and a second. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah.
I do have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Further discussion? No, I'm on a motion. I'm still in Jamaica, I'm still on a beach in Jamaica.
I bet at the finance committee.
Oh, yeah, I can imagine. All right. Uh, hearing no further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries. Uh, number twelve is a, a report, not an action item. Uh, it was requested, uh, to, um, uh, receive information comparing the special populations of various types uh, between Faribault and other school districts. Um, and so there is a report on that, um, in your packet. I don't know if anybody wants to, before, uh, say anything about that, or if there are any questions about that item.
Jason, I'll just add that, um, um, a lot of the proposals that we have approved in the last couple of months, I think, speak to these graphs and charts. And, um, if we were gonna continue along the same lines we've been doing things, we're not gonna have the outcomes we want. And so by adding these programs, hopefully, that will, uh, change the outcomes in a, in a favorable manner, because these charts aren't, they are what they are, and, and, um, you know, we have a diverse and, uh, demographic and whatnot. And so, um, once again, kudos for the, to the staff for bringing forward their programs and for the board for supporting the programs.
Thank you very much, John. Any other questions or comments on these? And for anybody who is, is not, uh, watching this perhaps, uh, on TV, um, we're not going over in detail at this meeting these charts, um, but the agenda for this meeting is posted online on the district website. So if you wanted to see the demographics, uh, for the school district, uh, for this item, uh, please check it out there as well. That's, that's available to the public as well. Any further comments or questions? All right, hearing none. Uh, let's move on to item eight B thirteen, request for increase in summer orchestra staff time. Superintendent, Mr. Superintendent, you wanna say anything about that?
Well, just, it's very positive. We are getting more requests for kids wanting to get into the program, which is a good problem to have, so it's a request for more staff.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Some of it.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, a request for increase in summer orchestra staff time. Any further discussion?
I, I would just agree that we've had a great growth, I think, because of the changes that we made in allowing kids participating in summer programs, so it's a very positive.
Absolutely. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, this brings us to the annual health and safety, um, budget. Uh, Mr. Superintendent, do you wanna comment on that?
Yeah, it's pretty self-explanatory. We just have to come up with a budget, um, for fiscal year fifteen and sixteen of what our health and safety costs are going to be, and, and then submit that to the state. And it has to be approved by the board.
Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the health and safety budget. Uh, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item?
Todd, is there any minimums that are set by the state that you have to spend in terms of, you know, based on square footage or based on number of students or anything like that?
Um, I might need Colleen here. I think just to, the way, just so I don't get the old method mixed up with the new methods. You, as long as you had an engineer or you had an expert that talked to the state department and it was approved through the state department N D's website, it really, there really wasn't a, a huge limit. I don't even know if there's a max, was there ever a cap on?
On, um, uh, well, there was that three hundred thousand dollar limit. I can't remember what that was for, but that was a lifetime cap on one.
One project.
Area. That's gone. Everybody's done that because it was so, the costs were so much greater. But generally, this is a, this is all levy for us. Some districts get state aid, but most don't. So whatever projects you have in these areas that you've identified and you are going to take care of, generally, there's no max on that.
Will, under the new facilities, oh, piece or whatever?
Yes.
Does that have an effect on?
Yeah, it will. This will be the last year you will do something like this.
Okay.
Because the health and safety funding will change dramatically now. It will roll into that new deferred maintenance revenue, along with deferred maintenance, and along with, um, one other, a possibility too. So then it does become part state aid, part levy, because it's equalized. So we're gonna be heading into some really, um, great opportunities to take care of deferred maintenance and not have it fall all on the taxpayers. The state will be picking up some of those costs, so we're gonna bring you those numbers. But in, it, it appears that in sixteen seventeen, the first year of the difference, that it will be pretty much a wash on what our current revenue is. But moving into seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen, we'll see some significant increases in revenue there to catch up with some of those bigger projects that we haven't been able to do, so. But we'll bring you some information on that, hope to do that in August.
So one, and I see Kevin's not here tonight, but one particular line item in here, um, fiscal year end fifteen hazardous substance of ten thousand dollars. Fiscal year end two thousand sixteen hazardous substance of forty nine thousand dollars.
Right, what the difference is between those?
Yeah, and I don't know the specific projects, but, um, those are projects that fall within that category that he's identified that probably need to be taken care of next year, and.
Promoting the tank from the high school.
I, I, my, my only thought is if it's hazardous, should not be like done yesterday, so.
I think it's, yeah, the underground storage tank at the high school. And the only reason we're doing that is because of the building addition. Otherwise, we wouldn't touch it.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions on this item? I believe we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries. Uh, and that brings us to an increase in grounds budget request. Um, so there's been a request, uh, from Kevin Hildebrandt, uh, uh, for the buildings and grounds to, um, spend twenty-five thousand, uh, each year, um, or spending twenty-five thousand next year. Wait, is this a, I'm, I'm sorry, let me make sure I understand this. Is this a, is this an ongoing or a one-time expense?
My understanding is a one-time expense to catch up, no, it's ongoing?
We'd put it in the budget. Of course, we review the budget every year, so we'll make the assumption that it's gonna be in there permanently. So, I mean, it can certainly turn into a one-time expenditure, but we were just looking at our grounds, and, um, I actually went around and recorded the different areas of the grounds that I think that need improvement. And, um, we think that easily we could spend twenty-five thousand dollars making the grounds look good and, and making our neighbors happy. And, uh, I don't like to use competition, but if you look at some of the other grounds that some of the other public entities use, they're in pretty good shape compared to ours, so. So, um, this would require a transfer from the general fund to the, uh, operating capital fund of Kevin's. I'm okay going either way with this. If you don't approve it, I'm fine with it. I can understand it, that piece two. Um, I can also understand Kevin's point of view of trying to make our, our facilities, our, not our facilities are in good shape, but our grounds look, looking tip-top shape too, so, okay.
Finance committee did approve it.
Um, any discussion on this item? Now, please, Ms. Olson.
Yes, um, see, this was not in the budget at all. I know it's gonna be on the budget, especially with the increase of being, but to spend twenty-five thousand dollars for weed and seed. Uh, we got other expenses. We go, we're about to build two new buildings. We don't know what technology is gonna go in there yet, but, uh, uh, to spend at this time twenty-five thousand dollars of the general budget for weed and seed, I, I just can't see it right now. We can, I think we can do what we can, but wait for the increased amount through the, uh, the law change.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'll take the opposite view of Mr. Olson. Um, I happen to have young kids that participate in baseball, youth baseball and whatnot. And if you were to drive by the middle school and, uh, some of the high school fields, you will find more weeds in, it's not grass, it's weeds in the infield of the softball or baseball fields. And, um, if, if, if they're gonna become weeds, we might as well seed grass and get rid of the sand. Um, it's embarrassing to play on, it's embarrassing to host. Um, the, the, the grass fields or clover fields, there's, there's not grass there. Um, I would, I don't know if twenty-five thousand's the right number or not, but I know I talked to Kevin about it. I called him up and I said, Kevin, what, what can be done? I talked to Superintendent Sesker about it, so, um, if twenty-five thousand's the right number or not, but that's what he put in here, so I, I'll strongly back.
I think you commented on the square footage, right? How you measured that, and that's the cost of providing that chemicals to that larger area, so I think you researched it pretty well.
The one thing that Kevin did, just, uh, one other comment too, that, I talked to Kevin today, and he apologized for not making it tonight, but, um, our practice field up at the high school right now, if, after you practice on it, becomes, um, pretty hard. And with the issues with concussions and things like that, uh, to not treat that field, um, does become in a sense a safety issue too. So I know you're only talking to one spot in the, in the district, but, um, there are some underlying things that occur as a result of not taking care of your grounds, not just your facility.
I'll just chime in one more time. And it's, to me, it's not all about the athletic fields and whatnot. If you, um, take a drive by the front of Lincoln, um, there's a lot of bare dirt areas, and I just don't think there's a whole lot of curb appeal there. If, uh, somebody moves to town, they wanna send, and they move into the Lincoln District, first thing they see when they walk in is, um, some real unpleasant grounds. I, I just, I, I don't think it's real friendly. Um, I'll leave it at that.
Any further?
I just would like to say the same thing. I mean, it's not just athletics and safety concerns. It is curb appeal. It shows pride in our schools and our community. Um, I know that when we travel to other towns, we comment on how nice facilities are, or we notice that they're not nice. And we would really like people to walk away from Faribault thinking we have nice grounds. Um, people coming in and looking at our town to move to, and they drive by, curb appeal is a big deal. I mean, it's a big deal with houses, why wouldn't it be with schools as well? Um, and I think it's kinda interesting timing that this is on the agenda. I actually had a gentleman pull me aside when I was dining out this last weekend to bring up this concern. Is, um, he lives across the street from Roosevelt and had shown concerns about the weeds and that he thought we really needed to bring this up. And I had actually said I was going to try to bring it up to Jason to get on an agenda for discussion. So it's not just us. Right? I, I gotta take care of just like that. But I just, I mean, it's obviously not just a Kevin Hildebrandt thing or a board thing. We did have, I mean, it's one person who sought me out, but still, if there's one person who sought me out, there may be other people who feel that way and just don't know to come forward with those types of things.
Any other questions or comments on this item?
I have no doubt that there's easily twenty-five thousand dollars worth of work that could be done to improve this situation. My hesitation is that, uh, while awaiting a comprehensive long-range plan, that we permanently add twenty-five thousand dollars to the budget. Having lived through way too many budget cuts here on the board, um, is, as, mm, as good as it would be and necessary as it is to take care of our, uh, grounds and so on, um, this twenty-five thousand dollars does nothing for student achievement. So my hesitation is not the twenty-five thousand dollars. It is to the idea of adding it permanently to a budget while still awaiting a long-range plan.
Please, Ms. Olson.
Uh, again, the, um, not with the cur, curb appeal, but again, if I was a new parent, I wouldn't look at the grass. I'd go into the school, talk to the teachers, principal, come to district office, the final, what have you got to offer? They tell, we don't have workers, or we don't have athletics, we don't have anything. Well, then I wanna go here. I wouldn't be looking at the weeds or grass. I'd be looking actually inside the building. What kind of teachers? Gee, we've had thirty, forty years, you know, if there's a teacher where there, your child's gonna have forty years' experience. That's the kinda stuff, not if there's a weed.
Well, we may not get people to walk inside the schools if they see the outside of the school not being taken care of as well.
Then I don't want those parents here.
Okay, fair enough.
I don't want them, you know, they gotta go inside, ask questions.
Todd, the Mr. Casper's, um, point, do you know when we're, when we should expect a long-term plan?
For what?
And whether it be on the grounds or a comprehensive long-term plan?
You're talking about the, just the buildings and grounds?
Yeah.
That's, uh, Colleen. I'm gonna bring her up for that one.
Actually, it's part of the new legislation. In order to get the money, you have to have that. And we have had one over the years. I know, I think Kevin's working on updating it right now, so that's one of the things that I think we're gonna bring to finance committee, and then we'll come to you as the board, when, in August, when we talk about the new funding for sixteen seventeen and seventeen eighteen. Um, he's currently working on updating that long-range plan, because you're absolutely right. Now that we've got some money to do something with this, we do need to have the board weigh in on which projects we wanna start, 'cause there's a long list of deferred maintenance projects to be looked at.
Can we look at making this a one-time add and not, not ongoing? Is, is it doable or not doable?
Sure.
The motion?
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, completely up to the board.
Okay.
If, if we want to be a one-time expense or, or a one-time expense.
Okay.
Depend upon whatever motion is made by a board member.
Mr. Chair, I'd just, uh, make a comment, and I appreciate all the thoughts that have been expressed, but, you know, we're talking about buildings and grounds. We're not just talking about buildings. We're talking about grounds also. We spent how many millions of dollars over the last several years dealing with some of our buildings? Parking lots, tennis courts, other areas, and I think to spend a few dollars on our grounds, I don't think is inappropriate. Speaking for myself, um, if this is, and I'm about, I'll make a motion to that effect, but, um, if this is a motion to permanently add twenty-five thousand dollars to this, even though there may be a need, I would like to have a discussion of competing needs. So, um, I would be voting against a permanent installation, or per, permanent addition to that budget, but I am very happy to support a one-year and that can be looked at again as year-to-year basis. So I move that this, uh, request for, uh, funds for grounds, um, be for, uh, a one-year, one-time event.
All right, so we have a motion, and I'm just gonna repeat it so that I make sure that I, uh, have it right. We have a motion for a one-time expenditure, uh, during the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen fiscal year of twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, for the buildings and grounds to be used on, uh, the grounds within the district. Have I stated that appropriately?
Sounds very good to me.
So that's, that's the motion. There's no, unless there's que, questions on what that motion is, the next thing we would do is ask for a second.
Did he amend the original motion?
There was no original motion. That's the first motion.
I'm trying to restate the, uh, the document that I see on page one.
So there was not a?
There was no motion, right? So there, there's this suggestion in front of us, but this is the first motion we had. I have not asked for any motions to approve that, as of yet. So this is the only motion we have in front of us. Uh, is there a second, uh, for that motion?
No second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, for a one-year expenditure of twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, to the buildings and grounds. Is there any further discussion? I would say for points of procedure, if, if there was a feeling among any board members that they, they adamantly wanted that to be an ongoing expense, one way to address that would be to make, uh, a motion to amend the original motion for that, if, well, somebody chose to do so, or we can leave it as it is and vote on it as it is. Just, uh, not making a suggestion for a way to do it, only letting everybody know what the procedure might be, since it seems like that was a large part of the discussion for, for a number of folks. So any further discussion on this item, Mr. Robichaud?
Not a discussion, Mr. Chair. I would, uh, amend the motion to indicate that it be a permanent expenditure in the, uh, buildings and grounds budget.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the original motion, uh, to make the, uh, twenty-five thousand dollar expenditure a permanent and ongoing expense, uh, for the, the grounds. Is there a second? Is there a second to the amendment to the original motion? We have a second, so to clarify for everybody what we would be voting on then next, before we can act on the original motion, we would act on whether or not we want to amend the motion. So this would be, the, the next vote that we will be taking will be whether or not we want the motion to be for one year or to be permanent. Uh, it will not approve the motion, it will only, uh, the vote will only be to state what that motion is, whether or not we accept the amendment. So is there any discussion on the amendment about whether or not that expenditure should be for one year or for multiple years?
Good job.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I missed the whole thing, the motion on earlier, I have to make up for that right now. All right, any, any discussion on the, the amendment? Okay, so then I'm gonna ask for a roll call on the amendment to the original motion. Is there any question on what we are voting on? If not, then I'm gonna ask, uh, the clerk to take a roll call on the amendment to the original motion. And then to vote aye would be to make the, uh, expenditure permanent as opposed to one year.
One follow-up question.
Yes.
If this fails, can there be the motion, can it go back to?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay.
No, that's a good question, so if, if this motion were to fail, this is for the amendment. So if this motion were to fail, we would then go back and vote on the original motion, which was for one year. If this motion passes, then we will have a, a vote on whether or not to approve, uh, a permanent.
Thank you.
Okay, so this only makes a decision on the next vote that we will take, but regardless, we will be having a vote on whether or not to, to do these expenditures.
Thank you.
Any further clarifying questions, it's a good question, thank you. All right, so, uh, I'm going to have with the clerk, if there's no further questions on the amendment, we're gonna have the clerk do a roll call. An aye vote will make the, a motion state that the funding is permanent, a no vote would have the motion stating that the funding is for one year. All right, Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Tom?
No.
Jason?
Aye.
Yvette?
Aye.
Myself, no. Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, it passes five-two.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. So now, we are back to the original motion, a motion that now states that we will be, um, implementing the funding of twenty-three thousand dollars to be used on the grounds of the school district, uh, permanently and ongoing until the board have made a decision, it's a future point to change that. And that's the motion in front of us, any further discussion on, uh, on the amended motion in front of us? All right, hearing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Tom?
No.
Jason?
Aye.
Yvette?
Aye.
Myself, no. Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, it passes five-two.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, um, and thank you all for bearing with us through that, uh, little bit of, part of this. The first significant parliamentary procedure we've had to do for a while, I rather enjoyed it, thank you all for, for working with us on, on that. All right, uh, and this brings us then, make sure I'm in the right spot, uh, we are now on item eight, B-16, uh, Resolution fifteen-twelve, Committing Fund Balance for Other Post-Employment Benefits. This is OPEB, uh, the board has had a number of discussions when we've talked about budgets going forward, um, uh, and so this is a follow-up to those discussions of transferring some of the Undesignated General Fund into this, uh, OPEB, uh, fund, uh, for future expenditures, expenditures on, uh, retired, uh, benefits for, for our employees. Um, I'll start with a, a motion to approve in a second, and then we can have discussion, is there a motion to approve?
It's moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, Resolution fifteen-twelve, Committing Fund Balance, uh, for other post-employment benefits. Any further discussion on this item?
So Jason, all we're doing is approving this resolution that we've already committed to moving the funds, the one-time fund transfer a month ago, is that?
Right, I think that's, that's a fair way to state it, and from a logistical standpoint, we approved a budget which said we would do this, these are the technical details we have to do to officially do that. So we essentially, in the past, said we will do this, now we're actually carrying that out. Um, but, but you're right in saying that the board has already approved a budget which contained this, this, uh, this item.
Just a quick comment, um, again, I, I, the board hasn't voted yet, but I think the board that, that are thinking fiscally responsible, because by putting this money way into OPEB, in the long run, as you save money, that's less money that we have to pull out of the general fund. So, uh, this is a good decision by the board to do.
Um, we have a motion and a second to approve, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, uh, um, this is a resolution, so Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Tom?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Yvette?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, it passes seven-zero.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Clerk. Uh, we are then moving on to item eight, B-18, uh, to remind you, eight, uh, B-17, uh, will come back to us at a later date. Item eight, B-18, Approval of the Fiscal Year Twenty-fourteen, Twenty-Fifteen, um, Budgets, so, Andy, if you want to walk us through that a little bit.
Sure, good evening, um, we're actually gonna go through the final fifteen, uh, fourteen, fifteen budget and the adopted or preliminary, um, fifteen, sixteen budget at the same time. So you have two documents on Board Book, um, one is the full budget packet, and we went over that in detail at Finance Committee, answered any questions that they had. Um, and then there's the presentation that I'm gonna go through today. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me at any time, I'm not gonna go over the full packet at this meeting, but like I said, if you have questions on anything in there, feel free to let me know. So just on the agenda for today, we're gonna, um, we're gonna look at how the funds are accounted for in the district, we're gonna look at some enrollment history and projections, the final budget for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, fifteen, and then the budget assumptions for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen. There's a full list of assumptions in your packet, I'm just gonna hit a few key assumptions, and then the adopted budget for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen. The funds in our district, we have six different funds that we account for in our, in our finances. We have the general fund, the food service fund, the community service fund, the building construction fund, the debt service fund, and the trust fund. In the general fund, this is where we really account for everything required to run a school. So this is all of the K-12 educational, um, activities, the co-curricular and extracurricular activities, district instructional and student support programs, superintendent and district administration, operations and maintenance, transportation, capital expenditures. Um, there's eleven restricted accounts in the general fund, one committed account, one non-spendable account, and one unassigned, unassigned account. The food service fund, this is where we account for every, everything related to the food service of the district. Um, the preparation of milk, breakfast, lunch, and after-school meals, um, and snacks. And like Colleen mentioned earlier, now that we have the after-school meals, that's new, um, in this current fiscal year, fiscal year fifteen. And then any equipment needs for the kitchens. The community service fund, um, accounts for enrichment programs for any age level that are not a part of the K-12, um, educational program. There's five components, and each has its own fund balance. There's early childhood family education, school readiness or preschool, adult basic education, community service, which has preschool screening and non-public pupil aids, and then community education, which includes adults with disabilities or Project Able that you may hear, that you may hear, um, school age care or Kids World, youth development, youth services, driver's education, and enrichment. And then we have the building construction fund, it's a temporary fund used to record all operations of a construction program funded by the sale of bonds or leases, and it includes, um, general construction, management costs, advertisement for contracts, payments on contracts for construction. And this is where we're gonna account for the majority of the DO and ABE projects that we're, that we have going on this summer and next year. And then the debt service fund, um, I like to think of this as where we pay our mortgage from. So this is where we record revenues and expenditures for outstanding, outstanding bonded indebtedness. We levy for this, and, um, the levies are calculated at a hundred and five percent of our bond payments to make sure that we have enough cash to pay for our mortgage. And, um, the Department of Ed does calculate excess fund balance each year, because we do, um, levy that additional five percent, and any excess is used to reduce the current levy. Forgot to change the slide, sorry. And then there's the trust fund, um, and this is where we account for scholarships donated to the school district, it can be expendable or non-expendable. Just a brief look at the enrollment history, this is the same slide that you've seen in the enrollment projections last month. You can see that we were pretty stable for about six years there, hovering right around four thousand students. We dropped in ten-eleven, um, down to thirty-eight, sixty-four, and that was when the STEM school opened up. And then now for the last five years, we've hovered between thirty-eight hundred and thirty-nine hundred, kind of gone up and down a little bit there. Uh, you can see that this current year, we're projecting an ending enrollment of three thousand eight hundred and forty-seven, and then, uh, projected enrollment for next year of three thousand eight hundred and seven. Get into some numbers, these are what we're projecting for the final numbers for fiscal year fourteen, fifteen, so for this current school year. Um, for the general fund, we started off at, um, July first at ten million, eight hundred and forty-five thousand. We're projecting revenues of forty-seven million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, and expenditures of forty-six million, five, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So an ending fund balance, um, projected at eleven million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand. The final budget for food service, we started the year off at about four hundred and thirty-three thousand. Uh, we're looking at a pretty balanced budget for this, for this school year, ending just two thousand dollars higher at four hundred and thirty-five thousand. Community service, we started the year off at four hundred and forty-three thousand, we have revenues of just shy of one point eight million, expenditures of about one point seven million, and we're gonna end just shy of five hundred thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-five. The building construction fund, you can see that we started the, the year off at zero, we have proceeds of three hu- three million, nine hundred, four thousand, and that's the, um, leases that were sell, that we sold last year, or, sorry, last week for, um, for the district office and adult basic ed, uh, projects. Expenditures this year are four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, so we're gonna have a fund balance of, um, three million, four hundred and thirty-four thousand for this school year. And then the debt service fund, we started the year off at one million, thirty-two thousand, we have revenues of four million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, and expenditures of four million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, so an ending fund balance of, um, one million and eighty-one thousand. And then the trust fund, this is where we account for some, some scholarship monies that we've received. Uh, we started the year off at six hu- six thousand, five hundred dollars, we had five hundred thou- five hundred dollars come in this year and, um, forty-five hundred dollars go out, so we're looking at a fund balance of two, two, I'm so used to big numbers, two thousand, five hundred dollars this, for this year. Then we look at, um, some graphs. Um, this chart here shows, um, the, the fiscal year fourteen fif- fifteen expenditures by fund. So you can see that the vast majority of our, um, of our account, accounts is the general fund, um, eighty-four percent. Then we have the food service fund at four percent, community service at three percent, um, building construction fund at one percent, debt service at eight percent, and trust fund at zero percent. So small, there's not even a little sliver there. And then we have the revenues just for the general fund here, you can see that the vast majority of our funds comes from the state, I think you all know that. This year, um, seventy-nine percent of our money comes from the state. We have four percent of federal sources, so federal grants, money in and money out. Um, twelve percent of local property tax levies, that includes the operating referendum, and then five percent of other local revenue, so miscellaneous fees, um, charges for athletics, that, that stuff. And then the, um, general fund expenditures by object code, the vast majority of our expenses are people-related, so salaries and benefits account for seventy-seven percent of our expenses in the general fund. Then we have thirteen percent for purchase services, five percent for supplies and materials, five percent for capital expenditures, and then zero percent for debt service and other, it's a very small amount. Any questions there on, um, this current year, fiscal year fourteen, fifteen? Okay, then we will move on to fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, some of the, um, revenue budget assumptions for the general fund.
Andy, can I just?
Yep.
Make a couple of points, just so we have it, on the general fund balance that we show the eleven million dollars at the end?
Yep.
Um, can you tell me ex- what other expenditures that we approved recently is included in that? Like, is the OPEB in there?
The OPEB is, um, it's not, it considered an expense, because that's in and out.
That's in and out.
Yep, it's from one fu- one class of fund balance to another, but it does include, um, six hundred and forty thousand dollars of the district office project, district office and adult basic ed. That's kind of the biggest increase there. Another thing that, when I was looking at comparing the adopted budget for this year versus what we're, what we're presenting for the revised budget, um, we do have an additional hundred kids that we have, um, from our enrollment projections, so that's about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars there. Any other questions? Okay, um, so we'll move on to the revenue budget assumptions for next year. Um, in the budget for next year, we do have a one percent increase factored in, um, from five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars per pupil to five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine. Um, at the time that we were doing the budget numbers, we, that's, we didn't have any better data, now we know that we're gonna be getting two percent for next year, that additional one percent is going to be to, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars based on our current enrollment. So, um, that two hundred and fifty thousand is not reflected in these numbers. Compensatory revenue is projected to increase by two hundred and five thousand dollars, state special ed aid is projected to increase by about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and there's really two reasons, we have increased expenditures in special ed, and that is a, a partial reimbursement program, um, and then it also is a new funding formula from the state, so can't really single out either one of them, you have to look at both. Third-party billing, that's our MA billing revenue, um, that's projected to decrease by forty thousand dollars next school year. And then alternative delivery of specialized instructional services or ADSES, um, that budget is in for three hundred and five thousand dollars of revenue. Uh, we still have not received any word from MDE as to the status of our application, um, we were supposed to hear that in mid-June, so hopefully soon. Any questions on the revenue assumptions?
Mid-June?
Yep, mid-June, but it's MDE, so we expect maybe July.
It'll show up in October.
Not, very not likely October, I would think, hopefully, hopefully soon, but we, we haven't received any other words, so, we know that they're looking at it.
Could we make a call?
We could, yeah, I know Cheryl has said that they've, they've received questions from Northfield, so we do know that they are in the process of looking at it. So maybe we haven't had any questions, because ours was perfect, and they're just sending the letter. We can, we can wish.
No, they're gonna be working after July one, so.
Well, right, right, yes, they are gonna be working, so. I'm not going to guess what they were doing or not. Moving on to the expenditure budget assumptions, if there aren't any more questions on the revenues. Okay. Um, the programs proposed and approved at the school board meeting starting fiscal year fifteen had been added to the budget. There's a complete list in your packet, um, I don't have that list in the PowerPoint, but you can look at the list in the packet and let me know if you have any questions on that. Um, the transportation contract rates are projected to increase by two and a half percent, health insurance rates are going to remain constant. Salaries and fringe benefits are based on contractual language for the settled contracts, and then the contracts that are up for negotiation have an appropriate increase factored in. Fifteen thousand dollars has been budgeted to transfer from the food service, um, or to the food, food service count for, um, negative meal balances. And then fund balance use for construction of the district office and community ed facilities is budgeted at nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars this school year, or for next school year, I'm sorry. Any questions on these expenditure assumptions?
Are we gonna revisit that lunch?
Yes, I believe that's, uh, on the discussion for?
July or August.
July or August, if we have a Finance Committee meeting in, in July, we'll talk about it, otherwise, maybe the board meeting or, yep, July or August, we'll talk about that.
Also, with that one percent extra, where's, where's that going?
That'll, that'll be factored into the budget with the revised budget, um, so it's, it's not in these numbers now. Any additional expenditures that may come up during the year, that'll help to offset those. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to the food service, um, fund assumptions. The federal and state meal reimbursements will remain the same this year, there's a ten-cent increase per meal charges for lunches to students. Sedexa will continue to be our food service provider, as you know, you approved their contract earlier. Equipment needs are budgeted this year at ninety-seven thousand dollars, there's a couple of projects that we have going on. And then, um, we're able to add a one hundred and twenty thousand dollar charge back of custodial costs, utility costs, and costs of lunchroom supervision to the, um, to the food service fund from the general fund. So, that's really gonna free up some fun, um, some budget dollars in the general fund. So, that's a nice, nice opportunity for us because of our stable fund balance in the last couple of years.
Could I?
Yep.
The ten cent increase in per meal charges.
Mm-hmm.
It's taken me several years to try and wrap my head around it, but that is a mandated, basically a mandated increase. By, is it the federal government?
Correct, yep, it's part of the healthy and hunger-free kid kids act, yep.
So, it is not something that locally we decided we wanted to do in order to-
No.
Support the budget, it was something that we were mandated in doing based on federal law.
Yep, exactly, thank you for pointing that out.
I bring it up now just as a point of information for the community.
For the public, yes, that's that's absolutely right, yep. Our hands are tied when it comes to that, there's a calculation that we have to go through that's sent from the federal government. We plug in our numbers and they tell us what our food service lunch prices have to be.
And back through the audit, if you don't approve it, then there's a large sum of dollars that we will not receive from the federal government in order to offset those costs.
Right, yep, the the federal funding that we get from our free and reduced kids would would not be received, so we would have to increase our my- our prices a lot. Okay, moving on to the community service fund budget assumptions. Program fees are based on projected program costs. The district will continue to levy for youth services, after-school enrichment, home visiting, disabled adults and disabled school age care. And school readiness revenue is based, is budgeted to remain constant. Now, part of, part of what was passed at the legislature was additional revenue for preschool, for school readiness, and then also pathways one and two, some scholarship funds for kids. So, that's gonna mean more money for McKinley, which is a really great thing, but that is not budgeted yet. So, it was just a timing thing with that as well. Moving on to the building construction fund. Expenditures are related to the construction of the district office and community ed facilities. And all construction and related expenditures are projected to wrap up during fiscal year sixteen. The debt service fund, again, levies are based on a hundred and five percent of our debt payments, and expenditures are based on our our bond payment schedules. So, now we'll get into some numbers if I don't have any other questions on the assumptions. Okay? Yep.
Why do we levy a hundred and five percent of debt payments? Why don't we levy a hundred percent?
Just to make sure that we have enough to to make our payment. We do know exactly what our payments are scheduled to be, but there are also some continuing disclosure costs, just information that we have to put out, so that kind of helps to to, you know, account for those expenses too. It's it's mandated.
In the very end, it all gets returned to the taxpayers.
Right, yep, any excess is used to offset our current, our current levy.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay, we'll get into the numbers then. So, for fiscal year fifteen sixteen, we start off with a projected fund balance of eleven million six hundred and sixty-six thousand. We're budgeting revenues of forty-eight million six hundred and thirty-five thousand, and expenditures of fifty million four hundred and fifty thousand. So, we're projecting a fund balance at the end of next school year of nine million eight hundred and fifty thousand. For the food service fund, we are projecting a starting fund balance of four hundred and thirty-five thousand, and we have a very balanced budget there. Two million two hundred and fourteen thousand for revenues and expenses, so an ending fund balance of four four hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-seven, so three hundred dollar decrease there. The community service fund, we're projecting a starting balance of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Revenues of one point eight million, expenditures of one point seven, so an ending balance of six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars.
Why is it so much?
There's, basically, it's two different factors. There's the ECFE, early childhood family ed. They're projecting an increase of forty-one thousand dollars, and they got some additional funding during this during this year. So, it's just working on what are we gonna do to really serve our, serve our people as best as we can with that program. And then school readiness or preschool, they had a lot of extra money come in this school year too. So, that's projecting right now at seventy-seven thousand revenues over expenses for next year. So, it's really just McKinley is the biggest.
Now, next year, when the ABE building is built, are we gonna increase our ESL or English classes?
Anne Marie could probably speak to that. I know that we we offer a lot of classes and we serve pretty much everybody that is asking to be served. Is, are there any plans to increase?
I think one of the concerns we've always had is that we seem to have a waiting list, and if we can serve more folks.
Yeah. We always have, we always have plans to serve more students. It does take a lot of collaboration, so we're starting to do a lot more collaboration with the Fairbo Diversity Coalition, some of the church-based organizations, faith-based organizations, some other community-based organizations, trying to reach out as much as we can. So, we always have plans to serve more, and we can serve more as long as we have classes probably around the size. We we try to do twenty or less in a class. We will go higher. The Twin Cities has thirty people in a classroom, in an adult ESL classroom, and we're okay with that. We just wanna make sure we have enough space and and quality programming that we don't, I don't know, underperform for the students. But yes, we always have plans to serve more ESL students.
Like Mr. Sessler says, you know, we have waiting lists, there shouldn't be, people wanna learn.
Yeah.
And, you know.
Yep.
What, you shouldn't be waiting list, also that with our new building, when it's built, that should be used almost a hundred percent of the time.
Right.
Is there a lag in the billing process though, I mean, you have to build for the year?
Say that one more time.
As far as the funding, you you, the funding sort of lags with the class size, so you have to be careful too that you're-
Yep, the ABE formula is based on prior year contact hour revenue growth, and we're capped at eleven percent of that. So, we can't, we can grow more, and we actually exceeded that cap this year. So, we're doing everything we we need to do and are able to do. But we can only grow so much financially and then support what we can in terms of costs and expenditures. But we're always looking to serve more, we're we're trying to strategically do more career pathway, bridge programming, to link up with a community college next door, to really plug in with the manufacturing and healthcare sector. So, we're always looking to get more students in, but we also need them to be motivated to come to the program as well. So, Jessica is doing a lot of outreach right now with community members.
Didn't this come up at the finance committee meeting where we can legally only grow so much? Can you expand on that?
Financially, financially, we can legally, we don't have a growth limit in terms of number of students. It's just a financial cap. So, let's say we sir, let's say our contact hour revenue is, I'm gonna be a terrible math major, so please, Todd, help me. If we grow by, if we grow eleven percent in terms of contact hour revenue, and our revenue was, oh my God, this is gonna be bad, a hundred dollars for that year, we can grow eleven percent, so what is that?
Hundred percent.
Students? Good, thank you. So, of that, so we're capped at that, so we could only grow strategically, financially, that amount. But in terms of student growth, we can serve as many students as we are able. And there is fund balance there, and we are using that to offset some costs.
But so, our revenues can only grow eleven percent per year? Is that, that's accurate?
That's correct, yeah. Just for ABE. I know, yes, it's been something that we've been working on as a community education group for a long time.
Is that a state law?
It's a state law.
Statute.
Statute.
Yeah, that's right. I'll put, I gotta put it down.
Oh, my gosh, that would be excellent if you guys would work on that with me. Okay. I'll tell you a lot more, okay, about that law.
Okay.
We're als- we also have a three percent inflationary growth cap for the entire amount per state, which is great. I mean, that's actually a bonus, but we are capped as programs.
To work on that, Chad brought it up. Is there a percentage should be unlimited or what exactly are you saying? Unlimited growth?
I I don't know enough about it, but why would you, I mean, if the numbers are there to serve the the people, why would you limit?
I don't.
Is it about consistency year to year?
I just don't know enough about it.
No, I think it's about overall state budget and economy.
It's a capped appropriation.
Yeah.
So, it's it's kind of similar to special ed, state special ed, where there's a finite amount of money, and so we don't get every, one dollar for every dollar spent, and especially we get roughly fifty-six percent. So, it's a similar concept.
So, we would blow up the budget if we just, everybody all of a sudden had adult learners, that we just added every year.
Yeah, and I can't remember the last statistic I heard, but we don't serve, you know, we underserved overwhelmingly in terms of the state population that qualifies for adult basic ed, we well underserved that population. And it, and some of it does have to do with student motivation, some of it does have to do with budget and allocation, so.
But that would help if the eleven percent was removed.
Oh, sure. That would be great.
Todd?
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think you misunderstood Todd's role. I got it now, but I don't know if I can do anything with it.
Todd is lobbyist.
You go to the end of the year resolution, you guys are lobbyists, you guys can vote on it next year.
Delphi.
Delphi, somebody.
Okay, any other questions while Anne Marie's up here?
Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to the building construction fund. You can see that we're projected to start the year out at three million four hundred and thirty-four thousand. We aren't expecting any revenues next year and spending the entire amount, so closing out that fund balance next year. The debt service fund, we're projected to start the year off at one million eighty-one thousand. Revenue's coming in at two million six hundred and fourteen thousand, expenditures of two million nine hundred and two, so ending the year at seven hundred and ninety-three thousand. And then the trust fund, we are projected to start the year out at twenty-five hundred dollars. We are working on closing out the trust fund, so we're not budgeting any revenues right now. We're trying to encourage any anybody who's interested in donating funds for scholarships to go to the Falcon Trust. So, we are budgeting to expense the full twenty-five hundred and closing out that fund next year as well. Okay, any other questions on those numbers before I get into some of the charts? Yep?
Can you just go back to, I'm sorry, I'm scrolling up as fast as I can here. Maybe it's the general fund one where it shows revenues of forty-eight million, expenditures of fifty million. Yep, adopted budget fiscal year. Yeah, can you just walk us through one more time? Where that deficit spending, if that's the proper term you wanna use?
Yep.
Where that is going?
Yep, for that, I'll probably point you to the budget book, that's onboard book. Let me grab that.
That might be a list.
So, yeah, just to summarize, everything is in the budget assumptions. There's the table on page eight of the packet that lists out everything that we've added, that you've added for the next school year. So, there's the one-time expenditures of the district office and community education facilities.
That's nine hundred and sixty thousand.
Yep, the automotive program equipment, that's eighty-five thousand. Band equipment, three hundred and eighty-four thousand in the budget. Now, that may be expended over two years, it was a two-year program, so they probably won't spend that all this year. And then there's all of the new programs that we've added. The Title I budget supplement, some special ed teachers, the newcomer program, high school, science, middle school RTI, licensed school nurse, the ADSES, that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The service learning coordinator, and then just all of those, I don't, I don't think I need to list off all of them, but so.
I think the difference was is that the majority of those programs fit within our budget based on the increase of enrollment. We had an excess, remember, we talked about spending four hundred thousand dollars in addition to our fund balance? So, if you added, simply in my head, if you took the four hundred thousand plus the nine sixty for the two buildings, the ninety thousand for the automotive, and the two hundred, or three hundred thousand dollars for the band equipment, that would get you to one point eight million. Perfect, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions on the numbers? Okay, then we'll move on to the graphs again, Drew. So, here you can see, this is the fiscal year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen expenditures by fund. So, just like you saw in the fourteen fifteen graphs, the vast majority of our funds are in the general fund. Eighty-three percent. We're looking at three percent in the food service and community service fund, six percent in our building construct, building construction fund for expenditures, and then five percent in our debt service fund. We look at the revenues, it's again similar, eighty percent of state aids, five percent of federal revenue, eleven percent of property taxes, and then four percent of local revenue. And then the general fund expenditures by object code. Again, salaries and benefits accounts for the majority at seventy-seven percent. Twelve percent of purchase services, four percent of supplies, and then six percent of capital and just one percent of debt service. And then I think this is the graph that all of you wanna look at. This is the one that shows what is our unassigned fund balance as a percent of our general fund expenditures. So, our fund balance, our fund balance policy is a minimum of minimum of fi- of nine point five percent. Auditors like to see roughly fifteen percent. You can see a little history here, we've gone down to fourteen point three percent in two thousand twelve. We went up a little bit, now in fifteen, we're projected to be at eighteen point six percent. And then for next school year, we're projecting thirteen point eight percent. Any questions on any of this or anything I've presented?
Just a comment, if you went before two thousand twelve, it would really be an ugly graph.
What was that?
It'd really be an ugly graph.
Right, right. Yes, it would have been very, very small. That's why we just did a five-year history.
I think it's interesting, 'cause I had this question for Andy too, 'cause I couldn't figure out that thirteen point eight percent, because our fund balance actually increases in dollar-wise. It's just that our expenditures are so much higher that when you divide the two, you get a lower percentage.
Right, and the fund balance number that we look at here is only the unassigned. So, it does not include our committed, that two point four five one or whatever that number is now, or any of those other restricted accounts, so it's just the unassigned fund balance. Okay, any other questions?
What would be percentage, which hopefully never reaches, I know nine and a half, but, you know, danger? What would that percentage be?
Well, you-
I've gone through it, but.
Yep, I think, you know, we would have to look at our board policy. Our po- our policy lays out different steps that we would take if we're approaching that amount. So, I know that nine point five percent is our minimum. I think if memory serves, between five percent and nine point five, we have, we we list out what some of the steps are, some budget reduction steps, and then lower than that, there are some more drastic steps. I'd have to look at the policy again to speak a little bit clearer to that, but I do know that the policy really lays out what what we're expected to do if we reach that amount. Any other questions? If not, I think that we would like the board to approve the budget. It can be done as one motion for both years.
Okay, so we could, we can have one motion, just to clarify, for both approving the final budget for the previous year, now that all expenditures are in, we'll be taking that to the auditors, and approving the adopted budget for the future year.
Correct.
In the same motion, we'll choose to do so. Any more questions, Thomas, I have handballed this thing.
Well, I was just going to compliment on the funnest PowerPoint I've seen presented on the board in five, almost five years on the board.
Well, thank you, I switched up the colors this year, so that must be why.
I felt like the same PowerPoint.
It's, yeah, the same content, but it's prettier.
Was the the clarity, the limited, you know, specific information, targeted information for each slide, and not have to wish that my bifocals were stronger in order to try and read some of the numbers. So, this was outstanding. A few years ago, I taught speech, and PowerPoint had been invented by then. And I had students use it, and you would've gotten an A on this one, so.
Well, I really can't take all the credit, Colleen really did all of the work in the past, so.
To all who participated in its creation, thank you.
Well, you're welcome, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the final budget for, let me make sure I get this right here, for fourteen fifteen, and the approved budget for fifteen sixteen. So, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion on the side?
I think we're prepared, we've been discussing it.
I think I agree. All right, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Approve, same sign. Motion carries, thank you all. That brings us to, I'm being myself organized, item eight C, some of the budget items. We have the enrollment report, the year finished off strong, very stable enrollment, as we heard in the budget reports just a little bit ago.
One question.
Please sit down.
Will the adult, the diploma, people participating in that program, will that show up as an honor on our reports going forward? Or is that just not, they wouldn't show up as part of this report, they would be adult?
It would be, right, correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can we put it on?
Another thing I would comment on is, and I I don't have a clue what it means. Our numbers throughout the- Our numbers throughout the year were much more stable this year than they have been in previous years. In past years, I think between the peak enrollment and the finishing enrollment, where you'd often see a number of almost a hundred students difference. It was a very large change, and this is just a year or two back, if you go back and look at some previous agendas, which is surprising to me, I'm not sure what it means for us. In the past, we've always thought of that as having a very migratory population and maybe that is changing. I'm not sure, but I would note it, and it's something I'll be keeping an eye on in future years to see if that stays stable that same, that same way. Any other questions on this enrollment report? All right, we have no financial report this evening. So next we move to item eight C three, the acceptance of gifts and donations. I will list these off and then entertain a motion to approve. We have quite a few this evening, starting with Craig and Charlotte Smith and the amount of five hundred dollars for Project Aew. We had quite a few donations for the Faribault Falcon Archers end of year celebration, and I'll read through them quickly. Kim Volk, on behalf of Dave Volk Memorial Fund, Justin Trailkill, Anthony and Jennifer Kong, McLean Company, John's Bait and Tackle, Walmart, Lions Meats, Dennison Meat Market, State Bank of Faribault, and the Faribault Archery Club. Between all of those organizations, nearly a thousand dollars of donations remain, we appreciate all of that. The Faribault Rotary Club and the amount of six thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars for the two thousand fifteen seventh grade courage retreat. Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign and the amount of twenty-five dollars. Cara Mall, retired, retiring Lincoln kindergarten teacher, some books, clothes, toy barns with animals, all for a value of fifty dollars for McKinley Early Childhood Center. And the Hannah Lips Foundation and the amount of three thousand six hundred and eight dollars and thirty-two cents to purchase a companioner. Okay, for the district's nursing department. May I correct my, is that the appropriate? Not sure if I pronounced that correctly. So we, we appreciate greatly all donations, large and small, to the district and all those who step forward to aid the programs of the community and the district. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution fifteen eleven, accepting these gifts. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution fifteen eleven, accepting these gifts. Any further discussion? Do you know, Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Tom.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Yvette.
Aye.
Myself. Aye. Jerry.
Aye.
Andrea.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Mr. Chair passes seven zero.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Give you a few seconds here to organize myself as we move on to the next part of our meeting. We are now on item nine A, the Wellness Committee Report. Anne Marie.
I actually really don't have a wellness report, it was basically the revised policy. So I apologize for that being put on there.
That's okay.
Okay.
It's okay, because next up is the Community Ed Report.
Right, so I thought I should stay up. Sounds good, sounds good. I thought I'd just talk a little bit about wrapping up our strategic doing plan with our Community Education Advisory Council that happened throughout the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. There were three goals identified by the council. One of them is bring services out, which really means that we recognize that services are very place-based and some of our residents have a hard time getting to those services. So we're looking at bringing services out to neighborhoods, to the whole family, like we're doing in Cannon River, and hopefully expanding that to more neighborhoods. The second one is keep Faribault economy growing. What does that have to do with community ed? Well, a lot of the programs that we do have in community education are really interested in looking at career pathway opportunities for their students, for the students that they serve and youth and adult. And we're just looking at, which the Service Learning Coordinator will be able to help with, defining sort of what career pathways exist within our community and surrounding area. Our third one is building youth careers. So really, this has a lot to do with building on Faribault High School, ALC, and Adult Diploma, career pathways that have already been identified with key business partners and other community ed resources to ensure non-college and college pathways for students. So those are the three areas that were identified. It was a wonderful opportunity that we had this year. We're thinking that's going to take about three to five years to really implement everything and go full scale, but please let me know if you're interested in any of these and be happy to include you on any of the committees that are going to move forward with these plans. That's it.
Thank you, any questions for Anne Marie? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There is no facility report this evening, and so that brings us to item ten. Remembering that item ten B and ten A were swapped in the agenda, that brings us to item ten B, which is a community comment period for those in attendance. The next item on the agenda will be an approval of resolution to enter into a joint powers agreement to create the Southeast Minnesota Special Education Cooperative. So this is a, a new agreement to change some of our, the way we are providing some of our special education services. So this community comment time is specifically for that item. There's a three-minute limit per speaker. Are there any community comments on this item at this time?
Hello, Board and Superintendent Sescar, my name is Todd Nelson. I'm the current owner of the Cannon River Education Center. And through with the school district, we developed that building four years ago with the initial intent was to educate kids that were being transported out of the school district to have them within the school district educated and brought back into our community. We did two renovations there, first was a thirteen thousand square foot addition, and we renovated that. And the prior year, the next, the following year, excuse me, we did another six thousand five hundred square foot renovation. And after that, the building is built out to about, for a hundred and ten students right now. The air exchange, the toilets, the drinking urinals, the, all the other facilities are built for a hundred and ten students for the whole building. I attended your work session on the prior on moving to Oatana and developing a new building there. It's a forty thousand square foot building you're looking at, which probably be about four million dollar renovation on the interior, another ten dollars square foot rent after that annually. So currently, you would have to pay over two hundred thousand dollars a year because if you pay as you go, you currently have thirty-one students in the Reflection, Sun, and Focus group and twelve in the Step Program. And Northfield has thirteen in the Step Program and six in the Reflection, Sun, and Focus. And as the work session stated, there were six from Oatana, six from Austin, six from Albert Lee. So which means the school district fair would be up to fifty-six percent of the total expenditures of that new project. I believe that that would be better off spent within the community. We would lose forty-five employees at the Cannon River Education Center if you choose to shut that, shut that project down within the community. And that's why I proposed to the school district that I would freeze the rent there for the next five years and offer it up for sale to the school district if they choose.
Any further comments?
Just comments that we've done everything we could to renovate it, the building, according to your needs. We've actually even went through and repainted the entire interior of the building once because they did not like the interior of the building. So there is eighteen classrooms, one computer lab, ten independent study rooms, five mental health rooms, one conference room, one administration office, three timeout rooms, two miscellaneous offices, a gym, a gym storage, eight large restrooms, a shower facility to facilitate the kids, three kitchen equipment rooms, and two fenced-in play areas. And as that building was sold to the city, back in two thousand eleven, we had to go to the city council to get it rezoned because it's in a residential area and we're proposing a school. And the impact to the neighborhood would be a positive in an empty building that would be refurbished and well-maintained by the school district. The large facility would become an attractive, functioning school program in the neighborhood, which in mixed business use of families and houses. So that's kind of what the, it was sold to the city as of two thousand eleven. I just would hate to lose the, the building and forty-five employees in the community of Faribault. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any, any other community comments at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item ten Aiden, which is to consider the approval of Resolution fifteen thirteen to enter into a joint powers agreement to create SEMSEC, the Southeast Minnesota Special Education Cooperative. Superintendent Sescar, do you want to say a little bit about this? Our previous work session was dedicated to this, this topic. I don't know if you want to summarize that a little bit for those who might be, might be watching and were not at that meeting.
Sure.
Before we move forward with that item.
Yep, and Cheryl can certainly help out, she's the one that did the presentation of that meeting. What this does is it allows all five districts to keep on moving forward with the plans to develop this co-op agreement in Oatana. The big issue with this whole thing is that our current joint powers agreement with Northfield is invalid. It's actually invalid this year, but the Minnesota Department of Education was kind enough to give us a one-year grace period of how we're doing the financing piece of it. So the financing does not work the way we have it. In fact, what we are doing right now doesn't work in a sign of compliance with the law. So we have to do either a intermediate district, a cooperative district, or a, some sort of a Kilkew County Ed District or some sort of Ed District like that. It would be like a Rice County Ed District or a combination of those. So the superintendents, the business managers, and the special education directors have been meeting numerous times, probably over the last five months or so, to talk about what the best situation would be to work this out. And Albert Lee, Austin, and Oatana all have similar needs to what we have. So the idea was to develop a co-op, which seems to be the most logical after going through all the different processes of the collaboration pieces that we have. So with that came a decision before moving forward with all five districts because there is a timeline. In order for this co-op to work next year, there's a lot of things that have to happen. And one major obstacle, of course, is finding another site for this to all work out. So all five districts ask Oatana, which is a central location for this type of co-op, to look for a site that could possibly be renovative, renovated and house the different programs that we're looking at, in particular, Level Four program and the current Sun program. And so that's what they've done, they've located a site that they are still working with the city to see whether or not they can create a school zone and then also work with the finances to see whether or not a lease of some sort could be set up for, for the, each of the different schools. So that's where we are right now. So before moving forward, the, the committee, if you will, that put this together, we, we wanted to make sure that all five districts were in. We, we can't guarantee that because other than, I think it's just the two more, just us and Albert Lee need to vote on it tonight to see whether or not we move ahead with this piece. I know Northfield is in Oatana and Austin have already voted in favor to pursue this. Oh, Oatana does tonight. Did Albert Lee approve too? Yep. So we're still at that point right now where if you want to move forward with this and continue the conversation, we have to approve it tonight.
So Todd, all this is, is continuing the conversation, we're not locked into anything?
That's correct. In fact, we would not be locked in, especially if we can't find, obviously can't find a space. Can't get a space to work out, then that does not, does not happen.
They do have a space identified.
They do, they do. We're just working through the details with that. You know, there's a railroad track that's fairly close. There, as Todd mentioned, there has to be a lot of remodel done for that to work out. So there are some pieces that we have to make sure that work into place before we fully commit.
To Mr. Nelson's point, if, if, and I'm not going to second guess his math, he's a well-respected self-made business person, he knows how to crunch the numbers. If it costs four million to renovate and we have forty-three students and fifty-six percent of the expenditures, is that accurate? We would be on the hook then for fifty-six percent of the renovation cost?
Well, we don't, I mean, those are estimates that can go either way. We don't know exactly what those numbers are. The closest numbers I can give you are the ones that were presented by Cheryl. So that's, that was at the work session. What we're anticipating right now is a levy of about two hundred thousand dollars per year that we would have to lease this, this cooperative agreement, this, this place. And I'm not sure exactly what the lease levy is right now for, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars right now for the current facility. So it'd be an increase in expenditures, but those numbers, and I don't want to contradict what Todd's saying because we just haven't ironed those numbers out. So those are just estimates at this point.
Mr. Chair. At our work session, we asked some letter, and I know that Cheryl sent out a letter to the parents. What has been the reaction to parents with the potential of transporting their kids to Oatana?
I haven't received anything and I don't know if Cheryl has either. And I haven't received any phone calls, so.
Nothing at all.
And I don't know if the board members have any. So we've asked them to send.
So what will we take from that? Is it indifference?
Will it be better opportunities for the students?
We think so.
Well, okay, beyond we think so.
Well, based on the presentation that you saw, that was.
We get better quality because we're pulling five districts, better quality teachers because we'd saw a lot of our staff left because of the conditions.
Well, we think that we, because it's a, it's a, it's a difficult place to work. The people there, kudos to them, they're doing a great job and they're doing wonderful work down there. But next year, I think, coming back, we have four staff, three staff out of the staff that we have there. So the turnover is incredible. So we think that the hiring process, certainly the staff that would be let go would have an opportunity to apply for those jobs as well. But we think that we would resolve some of the turnover if we have a co-op.
So three, three staff out of the whole.
Three licensed.
Licensed staff, I'm sorry, not parents. These are just licensed.
And I know our non-licensed staff, there's some turnover there as well.
Okay.
And this is probably the, is this the fourth coordinator we've had in my four years? Third or fourth? Three, third or fourth?
Of the total staff, how many, oh. How many are staying out of, somebody said forty-five staff, how many are staying out of forty-five?
Of the twelve licensed staff, we have three returning. And non-licensed, I don't have that number. Nicole, do you have any idea where that stands? It's probably more non-licensed staff returning to those positions.
I think one of the things that I've seen too, and Nicole can come on this, if there's an opening in the district for a paraprofessional opening levels, not all of them, but some of those pairs will go into the schools, the elementary schools or the high schools for that.
So much of the loss is not leaving the district necessarily, but moving to other positions in the district.
Yeah, not a hundred percent, because some of the people down there are dedicated and they want to stay down there with the kids, but it doesn't.
Yeah, but it is a challenging place and so for some, they're looking to find other places.
Mr. Chair, so if we do not have all of the i's dotted and the t's crossed yet, what's the purpose of this resolution tonight?
This is, the, the purpose of this resolution is to commit the five districts to keep on pursuing the financial means, to understand what the financial cost is going to be for the district if the place is going to be renovated and purchased at Oatana.
So where's the escape clause in this resolution? It says we are joining, destroying powers.
You're committed, if we are able to find the resolution for all these different pieces, my assumption is, is that we would continue to move forward with this. If we can't find a building space in Oatana, then all five districts would be out.
Will there, will there be a specific time at which this board will be voting on anything in the future, assuming that, that we've, that, that you and the administration felt like we were. assuming that, that we've, that, that you and the administration felt like we were meeting all of these, solving all the challenges that are ahead, space identifying that. If all those things did get satisfied, is there any moment in the future where the board would be acting on this again? Or is this the final vote, if that is the case?
I would say then the final vote would be September, when you do the final lease agreement for that purchase. So when you get to that financial piece, you would make the decision of whether to support that or not.
But aren't we forming a board that's separate from this board? If we approve this, that was my understanding, that we would be approving a board that would be separate from our board.
We would be approving, if, if everything went through, then the board would be formed. We'd have to hire a director. We'd have a number of different things included in this timeline that would happen for. There's a couple of things here that are adding, I don't want to say pressure, because we tried to, we tried to make it fit this current year and get it started, because that was our first proposal back in probably April or May. The Austin, the Outleasings, the Owatonnas needed this service right away and they wanted it to start this fall. And it didn't work for us because the timing wasn't right with our lease and timing wasn't right because we already have a cooperative agreement with Northfield and wanted to continue that whole thing. So the group decided to wait a year and develop a calendar for this whole process to work. So in order for that to happen, there are a lot of things that had to happen in place. It's either the, it's a bad analogy, but the cart before the horse, horse before the cart. They wanted to start this process knowing that five districts would be committed to this process to make this decision. And if there weren't, then they need to know, to know ahead of time to see if there are four districts to go ahead and if they still wanted to pursue this decision, or if there's three districts and so on. So for the, the groups to feel comfortable with this, even though I know you don't have all the numbers and we've been trying to like have to pull the numbers from Owatonna, we get this lease agreement, we get these percentages, we're having the same questions you are, they can't do it because they don't know if they've got five districts, four districts, or three districts.
Does that board going forward, not this board, would be making those decisions? Whether we take that building, or we decide to use another building, or we decide to have another facility, is that true?
Well, yeah, there's a couple of things. Go ahead.
Well, I think too with the special education directors would be the advisory group to, to the committee and to the board that's formed.
There also has to go to Minnesota Department of Education to approve the district and actually to.
And that's the first step, and that would be done as soon as possible. After all five districts are on board, then we would apply for that approval for it to become.
Yep.
Comment, if I recall, there was going to be a formation of a joint powers board as a part of this resolution. I don't see anything on the agenda that forms that joint powers board.
It's just on the calendar you gave us, that that would be, so I'm not sure if that just automatically comes from this resolution? Is that, or are you assuming that it actually comes from this resolution?
Well, I don't think you can do a joint powers board until you actually have a district formed.
Right.
It's just a board, it's gonna be, yeah. It's just a board that's being formed that represents the co-op. So you'll have, out of the, the five districts, there'll be a board member that represents each, each school within the co-op.
Doesn't that mean that we wouldn't vote on, as a board here, we would not vote on that facility? One of our representatives would vote on it.
Right.
Todd, did you say, maybe I heard it wrong, if this is approved and we're the fifth school in, or all five join this what's before us? That there will be a director hired at that point?
No, the director probably won't be hired until January of two thousand sixteen.
Okay.
Yep, there's still too many steps to get going before we can actually do the director piece. It'd be nice to have it all magically put into place and have everything in there, but it's just, it's, there's just too many unknowns right now to, to give you all the exact numbers and all the exact.
So just to clarify, we authorize, if we authorize this, it's essentially just saying we can continue doing our due diligence and, and they can use our school or our district as, as one of the five.
Right.
We will have an option to vote on the final approval. We can back out or we can recommit or, or get committed at a later date.
Well, you, I don't know about the commitment later at date, but in September, when you do the lease levy, when the numbers come out, if you vote not to do that lease levy, then there's no way we can stay in, because we're not going to be able to pull that out of our general fund. So we're automatically out.
But so that's essentially our out clause?
That's gotta be, yeah. I don't know what, how else you can do it.
I mean, my, to my point is, I certainly don't feel comfortable voting on something having no clue what the dollar figures are.
Especially when we're fifty-six percent.
But I mean, I think the whole point of this district though, is going forward, we have to accept that we're, there's going to be figures around. I know, I mean, I don't want to say that.
And you're not fifty-six percent of the cost because it's cost based on the December one child count, not on the count for, and we're all very similar in size, so that is not accurate. It, it's prorated, the other costs are prorated as we get into it, based on student, student numbers per, per district for some of the other costs.
So we would expect that number to be around roughly twenty percent because we're one-fifth of those, so.
Right.
It's not going to be exactly that number, obviously. It could be a little higher or lower, but that's.
I think it'd be higher because we're going to have a higher percentage than other school districts.
We don't, we don't have a considerably higher number overall of our child count or.
Is that child count, total child count, or just those students that would be served?
No, a total child count. December first, unduplicated child count.
I'll just weigh in a little bit. You, you have to remember that the joint powers agreement that we currently have with Northfield cannot exist. So we have to do something. So it either means we're going to do this on our own, which is going to be very expensive and not good for kids, because we don't have enough numbers. If you remember Cheryl talking, some of those, these are low incidence kids. So we don't have a lot of kids that can, you might have one teacher serving one student. The co-op makes sense in that regard, you know, to pool together some of those low incidence numbers to serve that. So we have to do something and really this is the best choice that we've looked at, to pool together those low incidence numbers and create this co-op to make it economically feasible. Now, we might not save a lot of money, but I don't think it's going to cost us a lot more than our current situation either, other than the building might be a little bit more expensive for that first five years when you're paying for that build out. But as Todd indicated, that really is your out clause. If you decide you don't want to do this, that's what you can do. You do not approve that particular part of the levy that will bring to you in September.
Colleen, if we stay here and operate on our own, just fairable, what does very expensive mean?
Well, I'll let Cheryl address that.
It's really the, the lease levy that, that Todd was talking about, that would be your cost. The, the director or the, the coordinator of the program would be your total cost. And all of the services, training, all, all of the materials, everything, because some of those things are shared. If we dissolve, then portions of that either go to Northfield or we have to purchase it back from them based on our joint powers agreement right now. We would not be able to continue the STEP program, Secondary Transition Education Program, as it stands right now, because there would be nine students, it would be, it, we just wouldn't be able to, to do what we do right now, probably at the level that we do it.
Is there any way to see that on paper, what, what that, those costs are on a sustainable basis?
Well, I would, I would, and maybe, Colleen, I don't want to put you on the spot, but we would, right now, we're sharing fifty percent of the cost basically with Northfield. So you get two choices. You, you pick up the other fifty percent or you cut half your staff.
But you're obviously going to cut some of your staff.
We would be cutting the staff too, because we would be.
Because your students are down, right?
Because the students would be down. So we'd be cutting staff, we'd be losing some of our staff, not all the staff, but we'd still be losing staff. You would be losing some of the quality of your programs and possibly the ability to serve some of your populations and we might be seeking some other way and, and it will be more costly. And that was in the, in actually, in the PowerPoint.
As an example that you gave, just.
We have no option. We have to serve the kids.
We have to serve the kids in some way, right.
We have to serve them.
And it could be more expensive. It could be less, a little less expensive. It's also about the quality. And as, as a special education director and as talking with others that do this, this is about quality of services to kids.
Do we have a quality program at Kirk right now?
I believe we do to a certain extent, but I think we could be doing a better job than what we're doing now. And I, right now, we're not able to meet all of the needs of the students within the parameters of what that building can offer for space. I have students that right now are, are placed other places for Northfield, because I can't meet their needs in that building and there's no way to change the space there to meet their needs with the number of students that we have. We're starting full this fall and that's a concern as well. Our numbers are actually growing, not decreasing. And what are we going to do at the point that we no longer have space there to serve the kids? Are we going to build out there and take green space, their playground, which is very limited? Those are, those are considerations, think of down the road as this population of students. We're not seeing this population drop. We're seeing the really high needs, the students with unique needs is growing, which they need more of that specialized, very specialized programming. So it's weighing all those, those considerations and it, and it's hard to predict. It really, truly is hard to predict, but we, based on what's happening in other communities, we have an idea of where this is headed.
Mr. Chair, I, you know, I totally support the whole idea of cooperation and collaboration. I think even Minneapolis-St. Paul have to look to their neighbors to provide services to a segment of a population that has very, very unique needs. Totally support that concept. You're to be commended for reaching out to our neighbors to see how can we provide better services to students. My only caution is that if we wait until September to make a final decision, I'm guessing that there's a lot of things that are going to happen, such as a tentative lease agreement and then all of a sudden that falls apart, looking at staff over the course of, and I know that this doesn't start until after, you know, sixteen, seventeen. But I, I just have some real caution about not having all of that budget in place prior to entering into a joint powers agreement. Because it is the joint powers board that is going to make those final decisions. It's not going to be this board. We'll have a representative on that board, but they have all the authorities and responsibilities, other than levy authority, of this school board. And so hiring personnel, and there's a lot of work to get done in that. And I just, I'm a little concerned that we don't have all that in front of us to make a good educated decision regarding finances. It's a good decision regarding what needs to happen for students, absolutely no doubt about that. Having lived in an Ed District for a number of years, I'm just a little concerned about that timeline of September. All of a sudden pull the plug in September when everybody's, you know, seeing, you know, standing around the campfire singing kumbaya because it all looks wonderful and then it's said, oh, I'm not going to be there. So a little concerned about that.
Yeah, and I think those are legitimate concerns, because we're concerned about that too. We always, we went back every time and we had the examples of the financing that, that has in front of there. We always went back to the service of the kids. It always came back to that. And trying to figure out what's the best solution for the service of kids. We know that there's going to be a cost on it, but what else do we do?
Yeah, I would say this is one of the biggest decisions I've had to make as board member. I, I feel strongly about providing services locally and not having the bus ride that was mentioned. On the other hand, you can really see the quality of services that will be provided. And I think I understand why we can't have those numbers in front of us, because this separate board or organization has to develop the plan. And so I can't see how they could provide the numbers. It's kind of what you spoke to, the chicken or the egg. In some way, we are trusting that this cooperative will move forward in a way that's fiscally responsible and represents our district. I don't see how you can get numbers more firm at this point, because you haven't made so many decisions about where the cooperative is going to be and the staffing. So it is sort of a leap of faith that we have to make, I think, the way I'm seeing it, but it's a big leap of faith. I understand people's concerns.
Well, I think I, if it's any consequence, we've had Gary Lewis, who's got a great reputation in the special education department in the state of Minnesota. He's been the lead on this whole thing with the research and maybe it's not as comforting to you as it is to me, but to see him take the lead on this and, and develop some of these program ideas has been very comforting. That helps, helps with some of the unknowns that are out there.
So just trying to formulate my own thoughts on this. It strikes me that the, the leap of faith we're making here is, is that when the finances come back, that they'll be roughly in line. I don't think anybody expects that the numbers are going to be identical to what they are now, but that they'll be roughly in line with where we're at and that there isn't a financial challenge there. To me, that strikes me as the leap of faith we're making if we go into this and, and there is an opportunity to back out. Should be fine that those numbers are not in fact in line. So to me, it strikes me that the, the good faith thing to do here is to make an assumption that those involved in going forward will do their best effort to keep those numbers in line with where we are now, so that they don't get out of hand. And that if we don't feel satisfied with that when September comes, we'll be in a difficult position. But, but we'll have to make that difficult choice at that time not to move forward if, if, if that's not the case.
From, from what I understand, every district that has had this decision to make has had the same conversation. And it is a concern to all, all of the boards. So it's, it's not, I think all boards are going to be looking at that, what is that final number? What is that going to look like?
Any?
No.
Yeah. One of many concerns is the transportation of these special needs students. You know, is any, you know, we, it was held in our community and now we're transporting, which we wanted to get away from for many years. I wasn't the impression that our billing was top-notch, our programs. Now, basically you're saying that it's not.
Well, it's not without its struggles. The, the programs that we have are very, very intensive programs. They are, they do require a high level of training and facilitation and support. And I believe that we'd be able to do that better now that we're into this ways, into our third, fourth year into this. I think we've learned a lot by doing what we've been doing. We have done our very best of what we can do at this point, given the facilities that we do have and, and the structures that we have for supporting them. I don't believe that our current staff contract helps us to support or gives us the, the opportunity to support the staff the way they need to be supported or to provide the consistency that the students require or need. So I think we've learned a lot over the years and I don't, I don't want it to, to be negative about what our staff have tried to do and provide and, and the leadership that we've tried to have there and tried to put some things in place, but I think we can do a better job than what we're doing. And, and yes, it's never easy to decide that we're going to transport students a little bit further. The one good thing that I think comes out of this is that Owatonna is really not that far. It's not like going to Jordan or Goodhue County to Red Wing or to some other, two eighty-seven, or not two eighty-seven, we probably wouldn't go to all the way to two eighty-seven, but nine seventeen, which is in Rosemont, Appalapalee, Eagan. So I think the distance, while it's outside of our community, I don't think it's as far as, as, and it will be a significant amount of time for any of our students.
Cheryl, do you have a sense of across the state, how common it is for districts our size to try and serve these students themselves versus how common, common it is to try and do, do a joint powers agreement like, like we're talking about here? My sense was that we were very unusual right now in trying to do it on our own.
Right, or with two districts.
With, with only two districts, that the larger cooperative is, is much, much more common, but I don't want to put which in your mouth. Is that a fair assessment that?
That's a very fair assessment. We are one of the only groups out there that, that is not part of, and the string of, of districts along this corridor is very few and far between. We are, we are, I think, the only ones left, I think, in the state that are not part of a cooperative. And so seeking out to be a part of a, of a cooperative in some form would, would be the next step.
And that's telling to me that you don't find districts our size trying to do it on their own. There's a variety of challenges with these low incidence students. You, you don't have critical numbers to provide the sorts of programming that you want.
And everyone's population, as you saw from the, the budget charts, the populations are changing. Our kids are changing, their needs are changing. We have more mental health needs, we have more significant needs with kids. Why that is, we don't have a definitive answer. But I can tell you that, that our kids are becoming more and more complex to serve. And it's, it's, it is what it is, and we need to find a way. And I believe that this is one of the best ways that we could serve our students and, and to provide appropriate programming and to help them to become the best citizens and best adults that they can be, given their limitations or, and, and their strengths. So if we can build on their strengths and decrease their limitations, we've done our job.
And Cheryl, just to, I just wanna clarify your last comment. When, when you say students are getting more complex, you, you're not specifically referring to Faribault students.
I am, in general, the larger, yes. We are, we are seeing that as well here in Faribault as we are in Northfield as, as they are. And that's why Austin and Albert Leeny had came to us and said, "We have kids that are homebound that we cannot serve." We've been in that place as well. We've had those kids that have been homebound, that we cannot serve in our schools because we don't, can't find a location to serve them. That is lea- leaving us in a very vulnerable position when we are not be able to find the, the appropriate services for students. And so by collaborating, I think we really can do that and find a way to do that.
Chair, I would like to, and, and again, my, my comfort level is, you know, the leap of faith, yes. I, I trust that, that we're, we're in that position. However, I would like to, and it's gonna be your successor's responsibility, not you, Cheryl. All of us as a Northfield person will be responsible.
Still have my, my.
You'll have your. If by chance, when September, whatever that cutoff date comes around, and it does not look financially feasible for us to participate in this cooperative, this joint powers agreement, I would ask that whomever it is that is going to be in the position, whether it's your successor or whatever, Cheryl, lay out the options that we have for our students. How can we match the quality that would be available in this joint powers agreement and provide the services still to students? If that's gonna be the focal point of our whole discussion is how do we enhance? And by the way, Mr. Hanson, it's not, Mr. Olson, it's not a matter of, do we have non-quality programs? I would match our special ed programs anywhere in the state of Minnesota. It's a matter of what you said, Cheryl, we could do it better. Absolutely no doubt about it, and we have that ethical obligation to do that. And so I would ask that we have some kind of an alternative laid out for us as a board so that we can continue to provide our ethical responsibility to provide those services for students. What does it mean if that joint powers agreement doesn't come to fruition because of financial issues?
Clarify, I don't know, Jerry, I, I thought we had a quality program here. That's why we, you know, brought Northfield in.
But it could be better, is the issue.
It could be better.
Yeah, well, I, I thought we had a very good one. Quality, yeah, could anything be better, but I thought, I was in the impression we had a very good one. That's why we started it, that's why we rented a whole building and Northfield came in. It can be better, but yeah.
Yes, and we're, but we're also in, and also, we are in a, a different financial situation where the state has now said that our joint powers. So we're under different circumstances today than we were when we first started, and we did not foresee this coming down the road. We knew that state funding formula was going to change at some point, but that was only a couple of years ago that we heard about that. But we had no idea what that impact was or what that was going to be until just recently. So we are responding as we can and as positively as we can and as planfully as we can. And I think this is in that process. It's part of that process of trying to determine what are the, the calculated steps that we can take by working together and, and looking to those who have done it before us, who have these structures in place. We've, we've done our homework and talked with them, others that have, like Gary Lewis, Dr. Gary Lewis. He was an ed, ed district leader. He understands the structures, he understands what happens in cooperatives. So that's why we went to someone with an expertise because none of the directors in the five districts have had that experience. So we went there, we went to look at what is, what are, what could our programs be? What could they look like? Going to those other cooperatives and ed districts to say, what do your programs look like? The, the sped directors all did that of the five districts. We went together, we looked at those, and we saw what's possible.
So you're asking for a big leap of faith in this board?
I am, I am.
I know what I, by really saying, hey, the leap of faith is, don't look at the house and, and when you go to Cozine, we'll present you with the price. That's basically what you're telling.
Well, we, we have an estimate, though. I think we have an estimate out there about where it's going to land. And so we have something where it's not just a blind jump. And so it is a leap, but it's for the students. It's not for me, it's not for anyone else that's sitting in this room, it's for the students.
Yeah, I guess I would characterize it as not a blind leap of faith. There's certainly some, some, some things we have to take on faith at this moment, but there is a method for us to move out of it. And I suspect every district that's a part of this will be doing the same questions that we are, that, that these numbers will have to feel reasonable to everybody involved, or you're gonna have five districts, not just Faribault, asking those questions. And so, so I'm feeling, I, I have the same consternations everybody else does, but I also feel like we've got great people involved in having these discussions, and I'm gonna put some trust in them and keep moving forward and knowing that we have an option to, to move out and find other options if, if we can possibly find at a, at a future date if we, we need to.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to, in what I said about having those options laid out, the options have to be of comparable service, not of lesser service.
Right.
That's a, that's a very good point, thank you. Do we know what the transportation costs will look like?
Well, those are reimbursable, almost a hundred percent.
Okay, thank you.
Ninety, ninety-seven, ninety-seven percent.
One last question. Like Jerry said, September, we look at it based on five districts, but then for some reason, you know, we vote on it, maybe the first one to vote on it, but then two other districts saying, no, we don't wanna do it anymore. Then where does it, can we go back? Another escape clause to another escape clause, or what, I mean, or do we mean there are five boards and one auditorium involved?
That would be hard, but it'd be interesting.
We have to have a board meeting in your city, don't we?
I, you know, I, I just, you know, I'm not, I know the background and know how much work we've done, and I know how much Cheryl's done, and I know how much the finance directors have done, but, you know, I'm, I'm taking the same leap of faith as you guys are. And so I'm hoping that you're gonna entrust us to be planful and come up with the right solutions for you. If it doesn't, I'll be the first person to step forward and say, it's not gonna work, so. And so will the other superintendents.
If one person drops out, then it's a dissolve. We'd have to do a new joint, I mean, so you'd always have that option, Richard. If one person backs out, then we have to do a new one at that point. We could decide.
Is that in any place in the paperwork here, or what?
Well, you always have that option, again, to just not continue.
My guess is that if it starts going south, Todd is gonna know that fairly quickly.
Yep.
And then he will appraise us of that situation. So that, you know, act on in September, but I would suspect we're gonna know sooner than that what's gonna transpire.
One last.
Do you please?
I think you answered the question, I know you guys did, but the parents, I mean, that's really critical for me. They had a chance to be here, is that correct?
That they did, and that, and we did put that in the letter.
Right, and I saw the letter, so no one emailed or talked or?
I didn't get it.
No.
And they're not here?
I, I think, you know, parents are in and out of that building on, on a regular basis. Their students are there in and out of that building. They see the things that work and they see the things that don't work. And I think, I think they are looking maybe for that we could do some things better.
So what, when Jerry was saying that, what are they telling us? Are they saying possibly we want better, so?
I, I think.
And I hate to put words in their mouths because they're not here and, and.
But I, I would take a message of that they're trusting the decision that is being made, would be my guess.
Bad reading brings really a lot with me, that, you know, if the parent showed up and says, hey, we don't want it, or we want it. And, but, you know, they're not here saying, hey, we don't want it, so it must be that they want it. Because they could write letters and call or be here, so.
On the Northfield side of it, when it went to their school board, I had two parents email, and it was questions about, there was confusion over which students this meant. They thought it was the students that we currently serve in our regular buildings. We said, no, clarified that, and they were all for looking at this in a different manner.
Because one thing is that, Jerry said it again, is that, you know, we're good, but we wanna be better.
And it is the district's obligation to provide quality programs and, and appropriate services to students. And, and we, we do have that right to determine where that is going to be. We want people to come along with us on that journey and to make sure that it is something that they will support. However, sometimes we have to make those tough decisions as well.
I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution fifteen thirteen to enter into a joint powers agreement to create SEMSEC, the Southeast, Southeast Minnesota Special Education Cooperative.
I'm moving the resolution.
If there's a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? I appreciate everybody's thoughtful consideration of this. This is a, a very important decision for many of our, maybe not many, for a very important portion of our community. And I think the, the due consideration we are all giving it is, is appropriate, and I thank you all for taking that time to do so. Are there any further questions or comments at this time? This is a resolution, so Mr. Clerk, if you would please do a roll call.
Tom?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Yvette?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Mr. Chair passes seven zero.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I just would wanna add this one comment. I would just wanna thank Mr. Nelson for everything that he has done for our special education students and, and the work he has done in the press building. It has been appreciated by many students and staff of this district.
All right, thank you very much, Yvette. And this brings us to item ten C. Consider approval of the schedule a special board meeting to approve bids for the district office in adult basic education building projects for Monday, July sixth, twenty fifteen, at five thirty P.M. That'll be at the district office in the board's conference room. This is a, we're sending out bids for those buildings at this point, and so this'll be to approve the bids as they come in. Do you know when they're coming in?
The first bid should be in Thursday, and then I think the next ones are the following Thursday, in the next two weeks. Yeah, so they're coming in.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion?
Chair, I will not be here until the, until the state.
Yeah, that's a good point. So I've already heard two who cannot be here on July sixth. I can be here on July sixth. We do need a quorum, so there will need to be four of us there to approve the bids. So I know I have three between Yvette and myself.
I'm in Jamaica, no, I'm not.
So Richard, do you, do you think you'll be there?
Yes, I, oh, yeah, I will. Can I suggest that, since we're meeting, do we have a work session? Can we have a work session if we need one?
We're already looking to miss three people, or two people from, from, from that meeting, so I think let's not do a work session when we, or even if we're missing two people.
Forget it.
That's okay. And so, so just to clarify, Andrea, you look like you were looking at the calendar.
Yep, I'm good.
So you're sure, so we should have five, so if something came up for one of us, we would still have a quorum. So, so it sounds like that date should still work. So, did I take a motion and a second?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second, any further questions or discussion on this topic?
What happens, that, all, all you're doing there is approving the bids. What happens if the bids come in way out of whack?
You mean way under?
I love your optimism.
I'm gonna ask Colleen to come up and say, put out, historically, she can give her two seconds. You guys, some of you guys have had experience with this, too, but.
When we put out the bid specs, there's always a clause in there that said the district reserves the right to reject any and all bids. So if they come way over budget, obviously, we're not obligated to take any bid until you decide how you're going to deal with that.
But my point is, that will be determined on July sixth.
That's right.
If it's way over budget or slightly over budget. I don't text.
Well, I, but I would say, you know, since those bids are coming in earlier, if we do see numbers coming in that seem much higher than we anticipated, that we could ask our, to alert us and.
Possibly reschedule.
And maybe have a reschedule or figure out a way to handle that so that i- if it feels like the bids are not in line, that we'll do that. I think that's a good question, but.
Yeah, certainly, if they're over, you, you know, maybe you wanna give us some, or give Todd some kind of an idea if it's, it's over a hundred thousand, it's over fifty thousand. When, what's the benchmark that will cause you to wanna meet before you approve anything and talk about how you wanna deal with that?
Mr. Chair, Colleen, if, if the bids come in and they're rejected, you have to go through the whole rebidding process, right?
Correct.
Another construction documents.
Correct.
Everything you have to be redone.
If we were to change this, obviously, you'd have the decision to change the specs, to try and get the cost down, yeah.
Is there any provision in the bidding laws to, once, if the board accepts a bid, to go in and negotiate down what that bid is? They have to go, okay.
Yeah, that's, bid law is very specific. You put out there what you want, everybody bids on faith that you're not changing things, and if you do, you're subject to lawsuit.
And, and for those who may not have been a part of the project, process in the district, we'll have very little choices about the bids that we, we can approve. We have to take the lowest bid.
As long as it's qualified.
Unless, I would say, there's one unless, unless there's some reason to think that that bid was not a good faith bid. I'm not sure with it. But if we have some reason to think that that bid, that they could not actually meet the needs that we have specified with that bid, we can reject it. But otherwise, we have to go with that bid. And, and example of that is often we have local companies bidding, and, and we have very, we cannot go with a higher bid because they're a local company or things like that. That's probably the most common thing people might like to do sometimes. We essentially have to go with a lower bid unless there seems to be something wrong with that bid, so.
Mr. Chair, you're saying the lowest qualifying bid.
Lowest qualifying.
Qualifying bid, thank you, that's the right word.
Qualified bidder, yeah. So you qualify them based on all the parameters that you put out in your bid documents? So they could be low, but they might have used a different type of material than what you specified for plumbing or electrical, and at that point, you can say, well, no, you didn't meet the specs, you don't qualify as a bidder.
Now the architect's gonna review all this before we get it, right?
Yes.
And Kevin, right?
Yes.
And it feels like we've also, you know, particularly for the, the bonding issue that we did with the two vehicles, it feels like there might have been one or two where we simply didn't have faith in the company that provided a substantially lower bid to actually do the work. And so we rejected them on some, I'm not sure what that was, but we had some discretion there, we have some reasons to think that that company can actually fulfill their commitments for that.
Yeah, most times I've seen it certificates of liability that they fail to turn in, that's the.
Kevin and I looked at the numbers based on two hundred dollars a square foot, and one of them is gonna be really tight. I don't remember which one it is, I think it's the district office. But the other one did have some wiggle room there, so we'll see.
So I think we'll, we'll ask for those numbers as, as we get there, and, and if, if we get a sense, you know, maybe what we'll do is if Todd and I feel like those numbers are high in any way, we might take a quick poll of the board if we'd rather reschedule to have a discussion some other time so that everyone can be there if we feel like there's a serious issue to discuss. That would be a way to, to find out if we should go ahead with the meeting if everybody feels okay or not.
Is there a, is there a dollar amount that everybody's, if that's hard to put one down?
I don't know if I'm gonna choose a dollar amount.
And you'll have to remember, we have to look at these as two separate projects, so we can't throw. so we can't throw the four million in a pot and say this one's over and this one's under, and therefore we can mingle the funds, we can't.
Bids are on two different.
Yes, yes, and the financing is two separate projects, so.
Be interesting to see how many bids come in.
Yes, it will. I think you, actually you can go out to, Kevin showed me this, I thought it was pretty cool, on INS's website, they actually have a place where they put the construction documents out there, and everybody, you know, in this day and age, does everything electronically. So when they request a set of plans or they request some bid documents, they actually have to sign up. And so there was a list of ten or twelve on each project, now, some of them might have been subcontractors, just looking at the, you know, subbing out part of it, but I would say we had five or six general contractors that were looking at it, so. Certainly some locals and some not, so.
And then, oh, then at some time, I don't know if it's at this meeting or some, but there's a couple new board members that we have a policy of change orders.
Yes.
Maybe we should review that if we go ahead, maybe not this because it's so new, but.
That's a very good idea.
Yeah, that is a really good idea.
Change orders, all of a sudden you bid low, all of a sudden, oh, by the way, we forgot the roof.
Hopefully the architects catch that.
I hope so. More than billions.
It'll be good to review that policy for us internally again, too, since it's been a while since we've done a building project.
Yeah, I can't remember. Trying to set a meeting date if I'm not incorrect, I think we've had a motion and a second.
Yeah.
I do not think we voted on setting the meeting. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to item ten D, consider approval of Resolution fifteen fourteen designating Todd Sesker as identified official authority for Minnesota Department of Education Secure Websites.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Assuming we're trusting him.
I appreciate that.
This is a resolution, so Mr. Clerk, if you'd please do a roll call.
Tom?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Yvette?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Passed a seven zero, it's too fast, I gotta slow down.
Thank you all. Up next, item ten E, consider approval of the twenty fifteen, excuse me, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen student handbooks for Jefferson, Lincoln, Roosevelt Elementary Schools and the McKinley Early Childhood Center. We will still have the, the middle schools and high schools coming to us at a later date, they were not ready as of this time.
Move for approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve, this meeting has gone on a little while.
I don't care, I don't care.
I would just say I really appreciate, I appreciate the principals laying out the changes that they presented to us tonight, that was very helpful.
This is our finance meeting. This is our, at the last.
All right. Any, any further discussion on these handbooks? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and that brings us to item ten E, consider approval of the twenty fourteen, twenty seven Superintendent Contract Addendum. Nicole, do you want to start that conversation, or would you like me to? I don't know what you'd like.
Jason, I think this is F. I think you said.
What did I say? I'm sorry. I said, I misspoke and said E, I meant, we're on item ten F, consider approval of twenty fourteen to seventeen Superintendent Contract Addendum. So Nicole, I'll start this, and you correct me if there's, there's anything wrong. In the negotiation for the new superintendent's contract, it covers the period twenty fourteen to twenty seventeen, we believe we found what was, what was an oversight in the, in the negotiation. There was in the previous contract, the three-year contract that Superintendent Sesker had, a change from the first year to the second two years. So in the first year, he could get up to five vacation days paid out at the end of the year, and then the second two years, he could have ten vacation days paid out. When the new contract was negotiated, it is my memory, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, that that topic never came up. I think the intent was to keep him in that, on that item, the same as where he had been, which meant to say, to keep going at ten days per year, but nobody, myself, who was part of the negotiating team, Tom and Jerry, I think Todd and Nicole, we all missed it. And so it stayed in there, the language was first year of five days and the second two years is ten days. So we're asking you tonight to, to believe that there was some good faith in the negotiation that would have been intended to keep that where he was at that moment, and see if there's a willingness on the board to correct the first year of that contract such that he would be at the level he was in the previous contract, at the end of the previous contract, which is receiving ten days of payout from his vacation time if he's accrued that during the year. Nicole, tell me if I've done a good job of summarizing.
You've done a, you've done a perfect job, yes, just to echo what Jason said, we, it appears as though we carry, carried forward the years and just increased them by one rather than carrying forward the number of days paid out per year.
Is there, are there any questions on this, this item before we go on?
How do you feel about this, Todd?
Put you on the spot.
Oh my goodness, I'm trying to be accurate.
I'll entertain a motion to approve, so is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any further questions?
Todd, you know what we're talking about?
I know, I heard, yeah, you're not going to say that, though. Should I? I don't care.
No, I was going to joke with you that he has to wear a clown outfit on Friday, so.
That's.
They want to answer that.
See, Fridays are supposed to be Falcon Fridays.
Thank you, I forgot about.
Maybe a clown outfit on Monday.
We have, we have a Freddy the Falcon outfit.
Wear a yellow beard.
I'll entertain an amendment to the bill. Bear in mind, sorry, okay, it's getting, we're getting punchy. There has been a motion and a second, if I'm correct, any further serious discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you all. And this brings us to item number eleven, other items of information, starting with the student representative who is not with us this evening, and so that brings us to any items of information from school board members, either any this evening. All right, hearing none, I'm going to move on to items of information from our esteemed superintendent, Todd Sesker.
Just a couple things, was able to attend the Community Vision last week, while Jerry was there and a couple other staff members were there, too, so thank you for doing that, that was interesting to, to listen to. Summer STEAM program has started, and if you guys want to go on further, you guys can comment. Summer STEAM program was, we started that last week, we had some good training with staff, and that is underway, doing very well. Been, I'm on the M eight S A Region One Planning Committee, and we planned out basically next year for our superintendent training in our Region One area. I'm also part of SEMNET, which is a Southeast Minnesota, it's basically a technology committee of superintendents and some tech people in the Southeast region. The nice thing about SEMNET, you should know, is that since we've joined them a few years ago, we've been able to generate some revenue from them. It's not a lot, it's twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars a year of extra dollars that we've been able to generate as a result of getting some what's called tech equity aid. And you can only generate that if you're part of a consortium, and we are part of that, and we, we do get some nice services from them, too. I was also at the mayor's reception last week for the kickoff Heritage Days, and John was able to, I was able to meet the, the mayor, Mayor Jazinski, it's getting late for me, too, and it went very well. And the final comment I'm going to make is, I was able to connect, I don't know if you ever saw the movie Good, The Good Lie, it's a movie about four lost boys from Sudan, and Kuth Wiel is a two thousand nine, two thousand nine graduate from Faribault Public Schools, and she is the supporting actress with Reese Witherspoon. So Sam Oak was able to, I don't know how we got connected with her, but she was, she's from Faribault and her mom's from Faribault, so she was there and Sam was able to connect with her, and then I was able to, to meet her at our local coffee shop, so, pretty cool story for a two thousand nine Faribault graduate, she went on to Augsburg College and then out to Hollywood now and just did some acting.
If you have not seen it, I would highly recommend it, and you will have a hard time keeping a dry eye.
It's great.
Very good.
That's all I have?
I'd like to step back for just a moment, I did see a production involving a Faribault graduate recently, Mary Poppins at the Chantessen Dinner Theater, and the title role being played by Ms. Anne Michaels, Faribault graduate, it's a fantastic show.
All right. Okay, this brings us to item number twelve, a couple of dates to remember, July is a slow month for us, don't worry, things will pick back up in August. July sixth, at five thirty P M. will be our special board, board meeting to approve bids in the district office. July twentieth, at five thirty P M. will be another regular board meeting at Faribault High School Performing Arts Center. So please note that that's not at our usual location, which is right here, it'll be at the high school. And so with that, item number thirteen is to close sessions so that we can discuss contract negotiations with some of our bargaining units, so I will entertain a motion to, can somebody give me the proper wording, what am I doing? We're closing the open session.
Yep, we're just going right now, I don't think you need to adjourn yet, so.
So, so we will, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn into a closed session.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.